We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone and please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll enter... oh wait. Okay, before we can approve the agenda, I would like to move on the agenda. J1A and J1A1 up. I would like to get out of discussion and move it up under curriculum, under action items. It was just misplaced on the agenda. Does anyone have any objection to doing that?
So the J1A1, let's see, only... what do you want to do as far as curriculum?
The J1A, the supplemental resources, and then the J1A1.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I'd like to move those two items up under curriculum, under the action item, for new business, to I1.
Do I have no problem with that?
Okay. All right, well with that correction to the agenda, I'd like to... Motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
Would you approve the agenda's adjustments?
A second there. Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. For an announcement, I'd just like to remind everyone that these board meetings are business board meetings held in public, they are not public board meetings. This board is governed by Idaho Code Title 33, Chapter 5, IDAPA rules, and follows our district's policies. And the time for public input is provided for the public to express themselves to the board. It is not a time to engage with the board, nor is it a time for question and answers. The board in its discretion may ask clarifying questions to ensure it understands the input provided. However, no discussion or conversations take place. That being said, we do need to appoint Rosanna Santiago as the clerk of the board. So I will take a motion on that. Hearing a motion on that.
Move to appoint Rosanna Santiago as clerk of the board. A second.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We also need to appoint a new district records custodian.
I move to appoint Rosanna Santiago as the district records custodian.
A second.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And welcome to the district and to the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on into public input. Do... did we have more sign up? Okay, so we have one patron that would like to speak, that is Linda Payne.
I'm here today to show my support for the Sources of Strength program as a teacher and as a parent of our community. As a fifth grade teacher in our district, I find the program valuable for our students. I've witnessed the program being taught in my classroom for the past three years. It teaches resiliency and self-worth. Students focus on their own strengths within themselves. They learn different ways to regulate their emotions, how to get help for others, and who they can turn to when they need support. My classroom is filled with students who have trauma-based backgrounds, and it's crucial that these students learn to be resilient. Every year I've taught here, I have had students be evaluated for suicidal comments. And I've even had some that have led to hospitalizations. In almost every situation, it was a fellow classmate who heard a student make a comment, and they reported it immediately. I strongly believe the Sources of Strength program has not only empowered these students to come forward to help a friend, but to teach our children who to turn to for help. Most importantly, I'm speaking to you as a parent. I have a 15-year-old son at Lakeland High School who is diagnosed with a major depression disorder in fifth grade at Garwood. Ironically, he was on the leadership team at Junior High, at Lakeland Junior High, and taught others about the Sources of Strength program. Even though my son receives regular counseling for his depression, I can't tell you how glad I am to know that there is support at school. Even though my son was unable to open up to his friends about his depression for many years, I knew not only was he learning to find his inner strengths, but his friends were learning how to look out for those in crisis. Last fall, my son went into a downward spiral. Fortunately, he reached out to his sister to share his problems. Fortunately, a friend of his who knew about his depression made his mom call me because he wasn't returning phone calls and wasn't quite being himself lately. Fortunately, a friend of his who didn't know of his depression somehow got my phone number to text me because he was posting things on social media, and she was really scared that he might hurt himself. Fortunately, his therapist and I were able to get him into treatment at Kootenay Behavioral Health before... I don't know what, and I don't want to know. I strongly believe that the Sources of Strength program has played a crucial role in getting my son the help before it was too late. He is learning that it's okay to reach out to others, and clearly his friends have learned to get help if a friend is in crisis. My son is lucky to have a supportive family and access to mental health treatment. Many of my students are not that lucky. But regardless of treatment or the lack of, what matters most is that they learn how to reach out and how that their friends can recognize their cry for help and tell someone. And that's what our Sources of Strength teaches.
Thank you. So without any further public input, we're moving into the reports section. The financial report was provided, does... looks like everything seems to be cruising along. We're trying a different format, instead of presentations, we're going to ask questions if we need to. Basically, it looks like everything is in line. With the exception that we have budgeted a $5 million ending balance in Word 12, which is good. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wallace regarding the budget that he presented? The financial report he presented? Okay. Did everyone have a chance to review the safety report? Okay. Is there a board member that would like to sit for the interview process for the next armed guard? I sat once. I sat last summer. David, you'll do it? Okay, great. Is there another board member? I mean, we could always have two. I did, I did. Okay. Bob? It looks like it's anticipated to be the week of June 13.
Oh, summertime.
Okay. All right, so Miss Sexton, David, Bob will join your crew. I would love to, but I'm a little obligated this summer. Okay. The superintendent's report consisted of just an update on numbers for the long-range planning facility. So it looks like we've had 59 parents that are willing to participate with representation from each school, not necessarily balanced at each school, but at least there is a representative. We do need to figure out how we're going to move forward with this. I do think that it might behoove us not to have just a long-range facility planning committee, but just have a long-range planning committee that includes facilities.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so... What type of direction do we want to get the superintendent on this?
I think we should better define what this long-range planning committee is because I think it might be made up of multiple subcommittees, which has to do with facilities, curriculum, you know, whatever else we have. Budget, all these little work committees that are... I think that, I mean, in my opinion, I think the board needs to define better what it's looking for so that they have sort of direction on what they're supposed to be doing and taking into account the information we have from the last time it was done, would be my suggestion, which would mean another meeting, a workshop, but...
Well, it's kind of critical, but it's not... Okay.
So it's more comprehensive, I guess, as far as the, you know, the district being this breathing organism, I mean, it's basically alive, so...
Right, okay. Dr. Meyer, do we have any... Literature's not the right word, but protocols that were established in the long-range planning, because Long Range Facilities Planning Committee was created in 2016 or 2017?
You mean like how did we go about it?
Well, do we have that documentation of what occurred, et cetera?
Yeah, we have minutes, and then we have the final report that was done, it's like 136 pages. And then we have minutes, and then we... the board, it probably is a board minutes, but we... the board created that subcommittee, and then we made sure there's people from every geographical area.
But did the board establish protocol for what the committee would be doing? I guess that's what I...
Oh, oh.
Charge.
Their charge, yeah, it's in the first, probably in the first. I can look that up and bring it back to the board.
Well, I'm just thinking, if we plan a workshop, it would be the appropriate time to have that information, that we can review it at that time and build on it, and so we're not starting from ground zero.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so that being said, when would people like to have this workshop?
You know, without a doubt, we need to move forward. My inclination is that I would like to have the new superintendent be involved after that person is onboard. So in the interim, we could work on the background stuff. But when it comes right down to doing the charge and setting everything up, I think the superintendent ought to be involved.
Okay, so what background work could we do?
Well, for example, if we could get the documentation from the past, that would begin to give us a feel for how the thing might come together, how the company operates, how many people are involved, if there were subcommittees, those kinds of things.
Okay, okay, so how about... Dr. Meyer, can you email the board all that information?
Yep. That document being 136 pages may not be emailed...
The protocol is 136 pages?
Well, no, the final report.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So that's going to be... It can be shared in our Drive.
Yeah, Google Drive, though, so... That's what I was going to suggest, so the emailing it to everybody...
Okay, just establish a Drive.
Yeah, we just put it in a directory and drag it in that way. That link can be sent to everybody, and then it stays nicely contained.
Like link, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Then, Rosanna, can you set up a long-range planning committee Drive?
Yes.
And then you and Dr. Meyer can make sure all the documents get there? Okay, going into old business.
Are we going to... I'm sorry, mentor, are we going to set a date for the meeting, for the workshop, for this, us to get together and look over this information?
Bob, are you okay with doing that, or did you want to wait until...
No, I think we could, I can, I think we could do preliminary work and background work.
Okay.
But, yeah.
So then we can still go ahead and move forward with having a workshop on this? Okay, all right, so yeah. Other dates, preferences, people's summer schedules that we need to consider?
I'm just trying to look at somewhere where we don't have a meeting or a graduation or...
Well, June's kind of...
Yeah, I have to come up for other ones, so... So the third week in June, or even the fourth week in June, from the board calendar perspective, and what I'm seeing looks fairly open. I don't know what the board name looks like.
How about Wednesday, June 22nd?
There's a 3:30 to 5:30 meeting at J.
Okay, we would have a meeting at 5:30. Okay, any other evening activities in the boardroom?
Nope, it's open.
Okay. Randy, would June 22nd work?
May.
June 22nd.
June 22nd?
Should be fine, yeah.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and schedule that workshop for June 22nd? Okay, moving into the old business. The presence of online records requests being online was brought up to this board in a training. And then we spent a lot of time discussing, and then it got tabled several times. Because it is kind of hanging out there, I'd like to know if people want to have any further discussion on it, and if they don't, if we want to take action on it so that we can accomplish, get this off the list of lingering to-dos.
I just don't think that it's really necessary, but I understand that, you know, it's so cyclical when we get those records requests.
It is.
And it seems like when they do come in, then it's several of the same requests, so I just don't... I don't think it's necessary, but...
I agree with that, yeah.
Okay. So you don't... why, can I just ask why you don't think it's necessary?
I just... I guess it's more of a, I don't see the necessity.
Okay. Of having sort of a storehouse, a public storehouse, for people to peruse to see what records have been asked for?
Correct.
You don't think that's necessary, okay, got it. Any other discussion on that?
I think Amber is... was the opposite view, but that's only because of what the attorney had recommended and some of the things we watched the prior records clerk go through, you know, like Trusty Bain was saying there was multiple requests for the same thing. So, but either way, I mean, it all belongs to the public anyway.
It does.
It's their records. And, you know, thinking back to the Mr. Wozden, you know, Secretary of State his and his assistant, they reiterated over and over and over, "Don't make the public ask for anything more than they should already have access to." So... I mean, that's just the way I see it, it belongs to the public anyways, but, you know...
Right, and from that perspective is why I would support just having a public storehouse, so to speak, of the information people are asking for. It's there, they can look for it, they can find it. The taxpayers aren't tasked with having to pay someone to go through and find all sorts of things. It's just, I don't know, that's just my thought, but hopefully we won't have...
But this would just be stuff that's requested anyway, so... I mean, I'm not saying that we can't, or that we... I just, I just...
Well, I mean, it's do we or don't we? We can just move it off the to-do list.
Well, currently, we do not.
Correct, currently, we do not.
No, I'm uncomfortable with what we're doing.
Okay.
I concede, I'm tired.
Okay.
Speaking, we are, yeah.
Not a worry. Okay, we have a job description for the treasurer. We were provided with ISBA's recommendation, and then I think another... Oh, we had Ms. Hapney's job description, which was for a bookkeeper position. She is our appointed treasurer, so we... I suggested that we have a job description. Okay, why can't I see this? Yes, okay. My only comment on this is the term of employment that's listed on the bottom. I don't have an issue with the job descriptions. I didn't compare the duties with the statutes, so I don't know if we're 100% in line. But "The position shall be considered in all respects employment at will, the employment period and other descriptions and terms set forth shall not create a priority property rights for the employee." These are set forth, et cetera. I think it needs to be stated that this is an annually appointed position, because it is. It's not... we don't like advertise for it, it's an appointed position. So, I mean, I suppose we could advertise for it, but...
No, I would agree, that's probably appropriate, at least just a simple statement.
Exactly.
This is an annual.
Right, right. Okay, so... Brian, thank you for the job description. I really appreciate that.
It looks great.
Yeah, the only thing that I'd like to see is to add that it's an annually appointed position. I don't know if you were a broker. I don't know who typed it up, so Brooke, if you did it, that would be great if we could add that.
I'll just take care of it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
You have a question about it?
Yes.
Says reports to, on the reports to, does the treasurer report to the board? According to policy?
According to policy, yes, the treasurer does report to the board.
Should that be on there?
Yes, it should. Thank you.
Well, are you talking about from a supervision standpoint, or are you talking to the board?
I just think they... I mean, there's been questions in the past, like they're supposed to report to the board, right? But we never see them. But we talked about them reporting to the chief financial officer.
Right.
He gives us the brief from them, or whatever we're going to do, we were kind of talking about that.
Right, we were.
So I don't know how you want to word it.
Very true.
Reports to the board through the financial officer or chief finance officer, so...
What do you think, Randy? The reality is...
She has two separate job descriptions. She's got the treasurer position, that is an appointed position, and then she has her hired position as a bookkeeper. So this part of her job would be reports to the board. The other part of her job is that she reports to the chief finance officer.
Okay.
That's my... Like, she has two separate jobs. We have the treasurer job description and then her other title position. So... The point was to have the actual treasurer duties outlined, separate from the other duties that...
Correct.
She does, so...
So maybe we need to rework this thing to make sure that... Is that what you're saying, because it is sort of melded, or I don't know how we do that?
Or just... I mean, is that the intent? Is that this is the total job description of her job? Or is this, she's the treasurer and she's, I don't know, we had her under the bookkeeper...
Right.
Job title, but she was also the appointed treasurer?
Right. Well, maybe, with this being a working document, because like I said, I didn't have time to compare this with statute.
And obviously, a lot of what I think Mr. Wallace actually finessed this, if I remember right. And I think a lot of what's in here is correct as far as her overall umbrella. Yeah, I would have to agree with Trusty Bain if it's... Because it's titled treasurer, then maybe we need to move, you know, put it on the table, so to speak, or come back and add to it, or revamp it a little bit. But I mean, the layout looks great.
Yes, yeah, it's very concise.
Yeah, everything, I liked the whole thing about it, it looks awesome. But maybe we do need to make sure that we have the treasurer duties, so to speak.
Yeah, maybe I could ask a question. I'm assuming, Brian, you put this together. From my reading, I think it pretty well encompasses what she would normally be engaged in. Are there duties outside of this that she routinely handle? Outside of what we described here in various...
Yeah, I mean, that encompasses quite a bit of what she's doing. There's also, you know, other aspects of, you know, working with the assistant treasurers of the buildings and, you know, coordinating that. She works with Lakeland Education Foundation. I mean, there's a... it's not all encompassing, but, you know, because a lot of districts of our size don't just have a treasurer, they have, you know, an accounting specialist who also serves as that role as a treasurer.
That's a good point, though, of the assistant treasurer, because I think that's something that's commonly outlined as a treasurer as some working relationship with the assistant treasurer across the district, which are the people in the schools.
Correct.
Yeah, so that probably ought to be included as well. And I think we can get it to the point where it's all inclusive here.
I don't think it needs to be all inclusive of her hat as a bookkeeper. If that's still what her title is, I don't know. But the treasurer hat, with respect to, you know, what the treasurer is expected to do, keeping in line with what statutorily the treasurer is expected to do, I think is what's needed. It wasn't that I wanted Ms. Hapney's job description, I want the treasurer job description. And I've heard you say it, that, you know, most districts don't have a job description for treasurer. But if we don't have something that someone can refer back to as the treasurer of what the expectations are under that title, then I don't think we're doing that person a service, especially given that they're supposed to report to us, and that's, I mean, we appoint them every year.
And I think what missed a little bit is that her sign-off on job description was outdated.
Yep.
And so that led us in kind of one direction. And actually, my take on the situation is over time, her duties have been devoted primarily as the treasurer. The kinds of things that are outlined here, plus the, given the assistant treasurer, I think that's important. Part of that, I'm trying to remember whether that's in the, in the code or not.
I believe that's.
Okay, so then, I have a question for Mr. Wallace, if you don't mind. Being that you, we recognize that the job description was out of date, do we need to adopt a job description also? Or, I mean, what is your input on that?
Um, we can certainly work on that if that's the board's purview. A lot of times you start looking at that when you report to position. I guess we could. I mean, that reports to, what, in reference to that, since it was a job description, like, who writes the evaluation? It wasn't referencing giving a report to the board, it was like, who does the evaluation? And that's like the CFO.
Yep, okay, all right. Yep, because I know that we have updated other job descriptions in the district as things have come up. It's like, oh, wow, that's really old, so maybe we just need to do this too. Okay, thank you for answering your question. So I'm in agreement, but I think we just need to, you know, use this as a springboard and revamp the whole thing and.
Well, and do we want two separate job descriptions? Well, one for her, her duties as bookkeeper and one as, as a treasurer? Or do we do one big umbrella that the bookkeeper is also the treasurer? And so therefore, these are all of the duties for this position?
I don't know what current practice is in the, in the district and in other situations. And in the past, I know the final item on the list of duties is other duties as a son.
Correct.
You know, so it just kind of, everything molds into that. Which means that from time to time, circumstances change.
Oh, yeah.
You may have somebody who do something for a period of time.
Right.
I guess I have another question than that. In thinking of the two roles occupied by the single person, is it really the job description that we need for the board-appointed treasurer? Or is it a policy that encompasses the duties of the board-appointed treasurer? Because I think it is a little bit different than appointing the clerk, because the clerk position sort of floats throughout the, you know, does other things for the district or what have you also. So I don't know, whatever the board wants to do, but that was just a thought. Because it's an appointed position, not a hired position, as far as fulfilling the treasurer duty.
Right, but the treasurer is paid.
Correct, so, but I don't know that we pay the current acting treasurer because they are the treasurer. I mean, she's paid because she's the bookkeeper for the district, correct? Or is there, because the board never voted to pay the treasurer that I'm aware of.
No.
As treasurer, so I think she's paid as an employee of the district, is that correct?
Correct. It would be, I mean, as I stated before, you know, the board could appoint myself as a treasurer. And then we could appoint Ms. Hapney as assistant treasurer and the other assistant treasurers, and we'd be within statute.
Right.
The board could appoint Cindy Hapney as a treasurer and the other assistant treasurers, and we're within, uh, common practice of many, hundreds of school districts across the state. So it's sort of, is this more of a, these are just the, these are the treasurer duties? And then her job description says act as the treasurer, you know, as per attached duties? And then the rest of who you report to and all that as part of the job description, is that what you want? I don't know. I think, you know, whatever gives the board more clarity and helps with that, we'll, we'll make happen.
All righty.
I really think if we get two or three clarifications and a couple of these items that we've talked about added into this, it will be fine.
Okay. All right, so then I will motion to table the treasurer job description.
Motion.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Brian, hearing none, the motion carries. More old, old, old business is board norms and protocols. At the last meeting, I believe you stated, Randy, that we needed a workshop and we never chose a date.
Oh.
So we do need to get that resolved. So, um. Do we wanna pick a date? Shall we look at June or July?
I think maybe start at the June twenty-second.
Well, June twenty-second, when we're meeting for the other workshop. Do you wanna bump it back to that?
No, it's just back to June.
We could potentially do that, as long as we don't get all chatty about. About things. Do you guys wanna piggyback it? Kill two birds with one stone, one meeting? Okay, y'all are real life.
I think they're, I appreciate that trying to do both of them at the same time. I don't think they're, they're both two big beasts.
I'm, I hear you on that, I do. Because the norms and protocols are, those are gonna be chatty conversations, I think, but. Mr. Quimby, any input?
No.
Okay.
We can do the following week and do the Tuesday, the twenty-eighth.
Nope, we can't, that's somebody's birthday.
That's the twenty-ninth.
Almost, we could do that. Oh, you wanna do it on the Tuesday? I can't do Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
Can't do Tuesday. We could do Monday, the twenty-seventh.
For June?
Yeah. What's the board?
Good.
Good? All right, I'll do Monday, the twenty-seventh. Five thirty.
Okay, we're saying Monday, the twenty-seventh?
Yes, yes. Okay. For the consent agenda, we have, uh, previous, or minutes of the previous meeting, HR items, and the regular and special bills. Are there any comments, conversations, or concerns about the minutes of the previous meetings? Okay.
We're approving all of the board meetings.
What's that?
Well, if we approve, we'll be approving only the board meeting minutes. In other words, these workshops and policy committee and that sort of thing, we would only approve those.
We would be, yes.
I appreciate having them, but.
Yes, no, we would be approving them.
Even though some of us aren't.
Yeah, that's true. A policy committee, nobody's there. I mean, we're there, but.
Yeah.
The full board is not present. So, yeah, so I don't think those need to be approved, the policy committee.
Well, we can, we can accept them as.
Yeah, we can just do the.
Submitted.
Okay.
We're aligned with that, just so that they are there, but I have the same thought. Not all of us are all these to know.
Right.
Right, you know, but I just hope they're all in the right spot.
Okay.
So I would move to approve.
Wait, we're doing the whole consent agenda.
Oh.
I'm moving on to the HR items. Does anybody have any comments or questions or conversations on the HR items that were presented? I don't know. Okay. Moving on to the regular and special bills, are there any comments, questions, concerns? Okay. That being said, then I will entertain a motion, oops, on the consent agenda.
I would move to approve the consent agenda along with the board meeting minutes and accepting the board committee minutes as presented.
One second. Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, moving on to new business, under curriculum, we have the supplemental resources for board consideration. Under here, we have the sources of strength program and then library books for TLE. Do we have any conversations, comments, concerns about anything presented?
I love the Temple Grandin book being on there, she's my sort of hero. So I love the Temple Grandin book being on there, she's my sort of hero, that's awesome. Awesome theme for to run out.
Cool. Anything else? Okay. Then I will enter, oh, wait, yeah, I'll entertain a motion on the supplemental resources for board consideration.
I would move to approve the supplemental resources for board consideration, um, except for the sources of strength. Because it's in the curriculum.
Okay.
Yeah, and I didn't remember seeing that on there when this was first presented to us. Maybe that it's a curriculum? I, I think it needs to be handled separately than just all the books.
Okay. So on the table, you have a motion for the supplemental curriculum of the TLE library books. Okay.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. So moving on then to the sources of strength curriculum, that's not a supplemental piece, is what you're saying, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we wanna have conversation on that? Are you wanting the curricular materials brought in for review?
Yes, well, I think we should handle it just like we have, and I mean, that would be my input, that we handle it like all the other curriculum. And so that parents have a, a chance to give their input or whomever, just like they came and got the other books to look through, which I greatly appreciated. I greatly appreciated all the feedback letters we got. I only wish we had that for every other curriculum that the, has come before the board.
Right.
But I really believe that it should be handled just like all the rest of the curriculum, you know? I, I don't see why we would, you know, move it outside of the regular loop result.
Okay. Dr. Pasley, do you want to speak to the sources of strength?
So we talked about.
This curriculum?
This actually came up on our policy when we were talking about second step, and you guys asked me to add it to this list, so that's why.
No, this isn't second step.
Right, but it was during that conversation, during second step, so then sources of strength came up, and you guys asked me to put it on that list because we wanted some parent feedback specific to that. So that's why I went this route. I could do a completely different route if you'd like it, but.
Okay.
I think it was two policies ago, you asked me to put it on this so that it would go out to our parent committee, the curriculum committee.
Want to clarify the question?
Okay.
I don't really think about this program. It's currently being used in the district, some, in some places.
Have we, I'm not sure what specifically. The counselors know it better than I do, so I don't wanna speak.
Well, that's fine, that's fine, no, that's the answer I was looking for.
Yes, so our elementary schools received a grant two years ago for this program, the elementary sources of strength program, and it's third through sixth. But we also have the sources of strength program at our middle schools and high schools. I think Lakeland, Lakeland High School is in the process of rolling that out, and it looks very different. It's not, it's not in a curriculum format like the elementary program, it's very different.
And so based on the fact that it's currently being used, I assume that was approved at some point?
It was not approved.
So my position is hard for me to vote on something I haven't seen.
Okay.
Yeah, the prior board gave us permission, we just didn't handle it as a curriculum. It was materials that counselors were using, it was a program, and the prior board gave us approval to do it. And we started with Timberlake Middle School, Lakeland Middle School, Timberlake High School, Mountain View. Then we got a grant for all six elementaries, we're the only district in the entire state that was awarded a grant for all six elementary schools. And then they have the, the classroom guidance materials that Heather was talking about. So the prior board did approve it. It just, we didn't, we don't, the prior board didn't follow the same format that this board is. So I think what Dr. Pasley is saying is she can certainly run it through this new board's process.
Except if I may interject there, there's nothing in any meeting minutes anywhere in the history of this board or the prior board that ever approved it. So this, the board prior to this board and the board prior to that board, there is no history in the minutes.
Well, it was, I don't know if it was in the minutes, we def, the minutes weren't as, as long as they are now either. And we definitely, the minutes weren't as.
Yeah, comprehensive, maybe.
Comprehensive, so, but I can tell, tell you, there's other people besides me that were there, that it was definitely approved by the board.
Yeah.
But if you'd like, I can, Heather and I can work on putting everything out and having it here and going through the other process. I just, maybe I missed it or should, I thought you guys specifically wanted it added so that the parents could give input on the curriculum committee. So this is, that was my understanding, so we can do it a different way.
Okay.
And we had actually, Stacy Lawler, who was running the program, had reached out to the Department of, I know Department of Education, and they provided us with a letter that basically stated that the sources of strength elementary program does not actually meet the definition of a curriculum. And so that was something that we submitted two years ago when we did our presentation to the board.
Yeah, that was in there, unfortunately. We just need to follow the curriculum path.
It, it's a supplementary program. Well, I appreciate the background on that.
And it, and it just is, you weren't on the board when we talked about this. It is the only research-based suicide prevention program that we are aware of. So there's a lot of research behind it and a lot of support behind it.
Can you give us a feel for how much time, how much classroom time is utilized to engage in this program?
So for our elementary school counselors, typically when we're doing our lessons, they're typically in thirty-minute blocks, and it's usually once to every, every two weeks that we're in the classroom. And for a portion of that time, part of that time, we're doing our primary curriculum, which would be our second step curriculum, which is our board-approved curriculum. And then some of that time is the supplementary program that we're using for third through sixth in our elementary schools now. The sixth grade's at the middle school, so now it's. So now it's third through sixth.
Thank you. So, what we're looking at is some sort of a confirmation process that says we're using this clerical program. It's highly rated by people out in the field, which I really appreciate. And are we going to go forward with it?
Yeah, no, we've, I know since I've been on the board, it was brought to me that this wasn't, the SOS program. I'd never heard about second step until this year, when I started getting parent complaints. But the sources of strength program, it was brought that, oh no, it was grant funding and it was being promoted here. And then it was stepped into each grade level. However, it had, the curriculum had never been approved. And then we were told it wasn't curriculum, but yet everything is presented as it is curriculum. And it's just this sense of transparency that we'd like to maintain, that the board does approve the curriculum. And so, I did ask that it come back so that the board could approve it, so that we can follow our processes instead of just having, instead of not. So, no, I just asked for it to be brought back so that the board could approve it. But, yeah, I.
Does this displace any of the regular health working? No. Because it's kind of a mental health standpoint, isn't it? I understand.
And when we were trying to get an understanding of what curriculum is actually being taught, we did do a workshop last July, or last June, June or July, for the curriculum to be presented to the board, so that the board actually knew what was being taught within the district. So, and sources of strength in the step two, or second step, wasn't there, wasn't presented at that time either. So, yeah, it's just helping the board get an understanding of what we have transpiring within the buildings. That's one.
So where do we go from here?
I think just to follow the regular curriculum, you know, get feedback from the parent, be able to look at the curriculum. I mean, the same thing we do with everything else, you know? And then bring it back to the board after we gather all that information for approval.
Well, it's very apparent that there are several within our district that strongly support this program, which is great.
Yeah.
So if we could just have the component of parental support, that would be great.
So can I follow a few labels specific to how we're doing that?
Yeah, that's fine.
And then would you like the material here so you guys can do it?
And make sure that we have any supplementals that go with that. And so, any kind of electronic material, you know, downloads, DVDs, any of that type of thing. Because that was another thing that came up with the other curriculum. People were wanting to know where they get that from.
No further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Yes. The other item that was moved up under the curriculum was the iReady ELA.
And that's a curriculum that was here that the parents came and checked out?
Yes. And Dr. Pasley didn't run me that. So far, nothing else like that has been found in the curriculum.
I think we're on eight books now that have been reviewed. And so far, I think we've, we came up with a protocol. And we developed a protocol, kind of a vetting system. So we were looking at any, not just CRT, but anything that we would deem as maybe not age-appropriate or if there was anything with, you know, just all of the health standards that were coming out with all the sexual type, you know, concept. So, we just kind of, each of those would have a color coding. And so, and then, once we flagged something, so parents have just been instructed, and I made a little sheet for them, and we gave them the resolution so that they would understand what we're defining as CRT. And then they were just flagging it. And then we would all kind of come together and look at each of those items that were flagged and then kind of put a rating system of like, this might be just a parent permission or just making parents aware, this might be an opt-in, opt-out situation, or it's a complete removal. But the board would obviously have to say so in that piece. So far, out of the seven or eight books that have been reviewed by parents, I think I have five or six parents looking at them. And they're just, as anybody comes, I ask, I've had some people call. And so, we have a sign-out sheet. They take it and they're coming back. And so far, everything's coming back clean, so, which is great. So, my hope is that there's just a couple. And, you know, we, Lisa and I have really talked about as we go with the science adoption, if we go with the social studies adoption, like, you know, these companies have to be relevant in fifty states, so they're not going to make one separate for Idaho. So we're going to have to do our due diligence to make sure we're reading everything and really cover-to-cover reading it and making sure that we're flagging inappropriate material and then letting the board decide what our next steps are regarding that. So, I feel like it's working really well so far.
Good.
Thank you for all that work.
Thank you.
So do we, do we need to have any further conversation? Well, Dr. Pasley, when did the, this iReady ELA program come into the district?
ELA and math came in at the same time. So, we started, I actually think we started piloting it in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. We started with Garwood, and then we started adding different schools. And then it just, we did the math adoption. The ELA is supplemental. It's not a comprehensive. So, again, previous board, all comprehensive would come in front of the board, but if it was a supplemental material, because it doesn't, it is not a K through two literacy program. So, it's really just the comprehension and vocab and grammar portion of reading. So they don't even sell it as a comprehensive program. So it's supplemental at best. But it is a basal. It gives our kids an anthology. It gives, there's, there are consumables. At this point, if we don't go with one of something, then we won't have an updated basal. We won't have any consumables for ELA. We won't have any guided texts or mentor texts for our kids. So, yeah, so.
Do we have any other iReady programs in our district besides the reading and math?
And, well, there is, for second, third, second through fifth, there is a writing component. So it's up there. But again, it's not comprehensive, so it's not a K eight. So they don't, you know, they're in the process of developing their program. So, math is comprehensive, but ELA isn't. So there is a writing handbook, second through fifth.
Okay.
And that's on the table too, to be reviewed as well.
Okay, great.
We put it all up there. Several of the consumables are digital. There are some additional digital pieces. So, when, in talking with several of the parents, like, once we get through the consumables, then we'll start looking at kind of the, because there's some auxiliary-like extra that you not necessarily are going to put in front of kids, but just so we're looking and flagging those. But for sure, these will be in front of kids. So we want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we need to have any further discussion on the iReady ELA? Okay, it appears that they're, they would like approval on this because for the next school year. My only concern is it had, is that not all the books have been vetted to make sure of where we stand. And this, you know, it hasn't had parent feedback. But because it is going through that phase, I think we're pretty quick to getting accomplished.
Yeah, I'm good as far as the approval, moving it forward. And I would say this, is that it's already in the district. It's already been used for several years down all that. And plus, we just adopted the math. If anything, I think in my brain, what would happen is there would just be some oops statement or something, like, we missed this thing in this one. Like, I don't see throwing, I mean, unless just some, you know, drastically horrendous thing happens. I mean, you know, if it's one lesson that nobody knew was there, nobody, you know what I'm saying? It was just there.
Right.
It's also my understanding that one of the parents even tried researching the quoted author and kept finding anything. So maybe it was a ghost author, maybe they picked it from something. I mean, who knows where it even came from?
Right.
Right? And it sounds like it's probably some one-off kind of situation. But I do think that we owe the parents and everybody the same courtesy of the process of adopting the curriculum.
Okay.
And that's, that's my opinion.
All right. Well, with that being said, I will entertain a motion on the iReady ELA, if there's no further discussion.
I move to table the iReady ELA until it finishes the parental input in the full course of the curriculum adoption cycle.
Okay. For the motion?
Second.
For motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to board policy. The, we did revise, or the curriculum committee revised policy three, 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 zero. The student discipline. Y'all didn't get the copy with the line-outs and the corrections, et cetera. So I don't know if you were able to review it with the current policy to see where the corrections and changes were. I know specifically, we tried to make it more in line with actual, with the statute and with, like, we tied in policy thirty, thirty-two ninety-five, which is the hazing harassment, bullying, cyberbullying, and intimidating policy that we have. Just so that the language all remain the same and it wouldn't conflict. And then we did.
Cross-reference.
Thank you.
Any, any of the existing policies?
Yeah, we did do that.
That was done, there was.
One thing that wasn't on here, or wasn't on the old policy, was the deadly and dangerous weapon. It has to be over two and a half inch blade for it to be deadly or dangerous. So we clarified that on here. We also looked at the fact that, of how, like, the elementary schools, you know, we don't want something blown up that doesn't need to be a blown-up issue, such as, you know, a child bringing his pocket, his little pocket knife to school. You know, making sure that just the building principal can handle that and not restricting anybody's hands to make everything a big issue, I guess, is, if I'm saying that correctly. Because the principals have a good pulse on their students and their situations. So, just making sure that they could quickly resolve it and take care of things. Is this the part, we've looked at some policies.
And making it a line war with statute, because the other thing was is making sure to maintain the teacher's statutory authority to maintain control of the classroom.
Yes.
Whatever that entails. Because the other policy really didn't back up the teachers being able to, you know, maintain control if, you know, something was out of hand. And the statute by definition does give them the ability to do that. And that was not either referenced. There is a bunch of references that weren't, statute references that weren't on the old policy. And there was a lot of language that was missing.
I'm looking for the language. Where are we putting the support for the teachers?
It's on page two.
It's on page two?
Mm-hmm.
Am I just not reading this? Because I don't see it on page two.
Maybe you have the one that. Would you like me to read it?
I'd like you to show me it. Yeah, that's not on this one.
This is the actual draft.
Okay, so the board wasn't given the correct draft. Because that's, good.
This is the draft that we.
We have the one that says current policy, student discipline. And then we have another one that says draft, student discipline.
So you guys won't be on the right one?
Right.
What's the difference between?
Well, the current is supposed to be our, in, well, I'll just take all the blame. I didn't give sufficient instruction to Rosanna about what gets uploaded and what doesn't. So, she felt that we needed the current policy. And then, the draft policy, we've, the policy committee had to revise what we send out to parents because it got a little confusing with all the marks, et cetera. So we send them a cleaned version of the marked-up policy. But the marked-up policy is supposed to come to all the board members. So, errors on my part, but.
Would you like me to send the draft right now to everyone?
Yeah, well, and the board has full access to, if you, in Google Drive, the thirty-three, thirty, the full thing that you can email also. I don't know if it makes a difference because none of it was attached to the Genus. And we probably can't really take any action on it.
Yeah, because I do want you guys to see that. Because the stakeholder one doesn't have the teacher language on it, and that concerns me. Because the, there wasn't anything in there that said the teacher can control their classroom and that, we felt that was imperative, that teachers be, have that authority.
So if you remember, we added this based on some of the feedback from, so originally, the first draft that went out to parents, we didn't have this language. And when we came back and went through all the comments, that's when we added it, based on the feedback.
Okay.
So that's why it's not included in the stakeholders, because they only got the first draft.
Okay. That's, okay. So we're moving on from policy three, 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 zero. And we'll bring that back up. It is under new business. So I'm going to table any action for policy three, 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 zero. That's my motion.
I will second.
Thank you. Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The hazing harassment, intimidation, bullying, and cyberbullying policy, that was, that's just being brought forward. We had some clerical changes. So we need to approve the clerical changes, which is the cross-referencing. That's the only thing that was changed on that, was identifying policy thirty-two ninety-five F and thirty-two ninety-five P under the cross-reference. And then. What, I guess, Rosanna, I don't understand item I two D.
I believe if you open that.
Policy 1520?
So it shows the incorrect cross-reference. It shows 4110, but there is no 4110. It's now 4105.
Right, but policy 1520 isn't attached to each other. So I'm just trying to make sure that we.
I think I took it out, sorry.
Okay, not a problem. So, no, that's no problem. We'll just bring that back at the next meeting. So that being said, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on 3295, or on policy 3295, accepting the clerical changes.
Move approval.
Thank you. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we have Chromebook purchases. Looking to purchase. About 1,360 Chromebooks, if I recall. Okay, it should be $544,000. And the purchase should hopefully be covered by ECF, the E-Rate Program's Emergency Connectivity Fund. However, if it's not, then we would be covering the purchase out of Esser Funds.
When would we perhaps know about that?
The application window's right now. And then we would probably know sometime in July or August, I guess. So, yeah, depending on the, on USAC, yeah, if it, yeah, I don't even know if we order today, if we'd be able to get delivery by June 30th anyway. Just with the way, you know, things are slow right now.
I have a question, is what happens to the ones that are being replaced?
The, I'm not on tech, are they, once we.
They need an hour, we're not going to get them in time.
Right, no, but I meant on disposal. We just, they, we had a company just buy some back, right?
Yeah, we did the buyback.
We did the, it was part of a buyback on our last sort of tech cycle, the four, five-year-old Chromebooks. They took, it was part of the cost to.
Sort of like a trade-in.
Sort of trade-in effectively, when they sort of are at their end of life.
Same company that purchased some, buy some back?
I don't think so.
I thought that was a different one, I don't think it was the.
But we can find out.
I could find out. That was sort of a part of an opportunity, but yeah.
So if they applied back to the discriminers of the other.
Yeah, or it might have been a reduction of the price that gave us, sort of like a trade-in, yeah, for a bus, yeah. If that was the case. It wasn't a super significant amount of money, but it's better than going to landfill and taking, and you have to pay.
Well, I'm assuming that even though they've replaced the old ones, they're still operational?
Yeah, they're operational, they're pretty slow. I mean, the Chromebooks are really a low-end device. And they honestly have a useful life of about four years. That's a mixture of some of the computing that.
Built-in options.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. Maybe even a higher-end laptop, you know, it's going to be five or six years, and for home, you need to start replacing.
Any other questions?
Is this just throughout the district, or are you seeing, so it's just a little bit of everybody sprinkling, it's just the rotation?
Correct, it's just a rotation. These, for the Mercy Connectivity Fund, they, part of the grant that is to provide devices that do go home, so these would be focused on secondary students, which is, you know, with the rotations, we'll make sure that we follow that intent.
There's no further discussion, then I'll entertain a motion on the Chromebook purchases.
I move to approve the purchase of Chromebooks as presented.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We have a request to purchase lunchroom tables. This would be to purchase lunchroom tables for John Brown, Betty Kiefer, Garwood, Apple, and Laitlin Middle School. We'll be replacing over 20-year-old tables. Looks like we need to purchase 87 at roughly $1,950 a table for a total of $169,650 for lunchroom tables. Do we have any conversation?
I have the same question, what happens to the old ones?
Those are, I mean, we could try to surplus them, but they're, I don't think we're going to get much for those.
Huge, obviously.
Yeah.
And so, disposal of those is. They go out of metal, right?
Little bit, yeah. So, yeah, we'd have to see if we can get some to take them and not throw to the landfill and things like that. But there are, you know, a lot of those tables that, you know, were super heavy and we've actually had some melanite claims occasionally when people put them up and they're old and they're just, these are, you know, been welded and they're, definite time. We're in a good place with the, you know, fund 290, Kevin is doing really well and so has the resources to help out.
Great, well, the time to do all of those one-time purchases out of the food service fund, just because we do have that, you know, extra money that we wouldn't normally have.
Correct.
So those are one-time purchases, if we, as much as we can replace with those funds right now, the better.
Definitely have more requests coming forward, but these are the ones right now.
Will there be a cost to dispose of these? The 87 tables?
I don't know, I haven't looked into that. We'll just have to work with maintenance and see if we, you know, first you might reach out to their school district, you might reach out to others that could be. Hopefully not.
But we just don't want a big stack of them in the back of maintenance or someplace or something, you know?
Yeah, either do I.
Do we recycle them?
Yeah, we do, we.
Do we get paid for it, though?
Yeah, yeah, we take things like Pacific Recycling and things like that and put it into maintenance as a fund that they, you know, we sort of put those dollars in and it goes towards small purchases for facilities and things like that.
Hammer.
Hammer, a new hammer.
I know that we have to bid for the purchase of some of the lunchroom tables.
I'll second that. Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item up for request is steam tables. So there's a request to purchase eight steam tables for the food service program. They're replacing over 20-year-old tables. Oh, wow, looks like there's a lead time of almost a year from the old steam tables.
If we can purchase these without looking, because it's under.
We actually did, for these prices, yeah, we didn't do a formal bid, but we did go get three quotes, only two vendors responded, and then we sent it, you know, for that program. If an individual item's over 5,000, you have to get approved from the State Department Food Service Division to use the fund. So we, we sent that information to them with the quotes that we received and things like that, and they approved it on their own.
I move to make the purchase of the steam tables.
I have one other question. Initially, we were looking for 16, and this is only for eight. Is there a reason why we?
Because of the lead time, you can't get them. And so probably in another month or two, or a few, we're going to try to, if we can, if we stock up, we're going to come back with another eight. But we always want to get what we can now.
Can we, can we put in the order for the 16 and they fulfill eight with eight being on backorder?
We could, we just didn't. We sort of did what we could get in, and that part of that was, we didn't want to, as we're asking approval from the state and they're looking at things, we just wanted to say, this is what we're doing now.
Okay, gotcha. Now, second, trustee Jones's motion.
Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And I would like to say that those tables are $10,576,66 per steam table for a total of $84,640.
It's great that I started yours.
I know. Next item, should make all happy, it's on the phone service.
And I would just like to commend CFO for the work he's done on this. This was a light of my brought up a lot back there as a concern, and I appreciate that would mitigate problems.
Yeah, that's great. I think the savings would be phenomenal. Do you have any questions, conversations? I do. Okay.
For Mr. Wallace, since you work with them, so any of the existing Cisco phones we have or other phones, are they compatible with this VoIP system? So all the existing equipment we have has to go away, and this is all new equipment throughout the district for this phone system?
Correct, all the plastic. It was, as far as not devices such as our, the beacons and all the things are sort of tight into it, that's still compatible.
Sure.
With the backend software and things that we're using with this phone system. The, but the actual phone, you know, that Cisco phone right there, yeah, that would not be compatible, that's proprietary. So all that, that phone, you know, those phones, we'd have to, you know, they, see if there's a market for those to surplus them, but they, and I think I had in the information there that we'd have a one-time cost of.
$60,000.
It cost me $60,000 for the, common term is like elastic.
Okay. So we don't know how we're going to dispose of the over 500 phones that we're replacing?
I haven't looked into those options yet. You know, sometimes there is a market for them, often, you know, I just don't know.
I have any questions?
Have you been taking into consideration the different costs? If you amortize that over a useful life of five years or something of that sort? And looking at the major reduction we have in monthly costs, are there still?
Oh, yeah. Four months of monthly costs takes care of the purchase of 60. And we'll be dropping that monthly cost significantly, so. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the phone service charge. Change, phone service change.
I'm all moved to approve the phone service request as considered.
Sorry.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, we've had a request to use, we have a lease for the LHS senior grad party, parents did like four buses and drivers for the grad party at Triple Play on June 8. And they're paying $1, because this is a lease. Any questions or concerns?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the Triple Play bus lease for grad night.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we have the high school football equipment use requests. Both high schools are requesting to use their football equipment for summer camps. Apparently, this is. This is an annual request, and IHSAA does not provide any coverage for the athletic equipment or the players at the camps. So liability rests solely with the school camp or clinic. Do you have any questions, comments, discussions on this? No? Okay. I'll entertain a motion on the high school football equipment use requests.
Yeah, I have one question. So I would assume, being that they don't cover, and this is a continuing practice that we have insurance in place that does cover this liability for these football camp?
Oh, yeah, the parents sign up.
Okay. Does the school district have liability insurance that covers the players and the equipment while they're utilizing it on our school property?
Well, for, if we were negligent or liable for something like that, we certainly would be covered. Our insurance doesn't cover if a student is involved in activity and, let's say, has a busted leg. They're not covered, just like if they're playing for our football team, they're not covered. You don't, that's not a.
Parents' issue.
Parents' insurance, correct. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's just, you know, sort of a hazardous activity. But we hope there's no.
No sports, sorry.
The formality came about many years ago, with the request of IHSA, so that they could get out from underneath the liability issue.
Right, nobody wants to be like.
We ran into it for at least 20, 30 years, about that. Yeah, there hasn't been any issues. I mean, we certainly, you know, could be sued, but that hasn't been in the public so far.
Okay.
I would move to approve both requests, or like on that, temporarily, use of football equipment.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, I would like to amend the March 9, 2022 regular school board meeting minutes that were approved. After approval, I reviewed them, I was looking for something in the minutes, and I discovered that there was a clerical error. On page eight of the minutes, it states that the board scheduled a special board meeting for Wednesday, May 23, 2022, at 5:30. That actually is March 23, 2022, so I would like that record corrected. And then the second set of minutes that I would like to amend are the June 7, 2021 minutes. And again, I was doing research and discovered that these minutes were approved with showing that trustee Grissom was present at the workshop and she was not. So that was a clerical oversight. So I would like to amend these minutes to show that she was absent as well as trustee Ives. Any questions?
So the March 9, 2022, that's item K on page eight, and you're referring to the workshop?
I believe so, let me pull it up. It is item J-1?
J-1.
Oh, wait, 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 no, hold on. My mistake, it's like, that's not page eight. Yeah, you're right, it's on page eight. This thing is just not working right. And this thing being board book. Okay, there we go. It's K, correct, discussion item in the very first paragraph. It states 5/23/2022, and I would like that corrected to 3/23/2022. 22. And then on the June 7, 2021, it's simply in the. And then on the June seventh, twenty twenty-one, it's simply in the format of who was present, which is at the very top. And that needs to say that trustee Grissom was absent.
And trustee Irons too?
Yes, it does state trustee Irons was absent, but it doesn't, it states you were here and you were not.
Oh.
I had to watch the video too, so she wasn't there.
The ghost was in.
Yeah, in spirit. She was there in spirit and thought. Any more questions? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to amend the March ninth, twenty twenty-two minutes and the June seventh, twenty twenty-one minutes. So hearing a motion and a second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, the motion carries. Moving on to the SRO MOUs. On the Spirit Lake one, I did have questions. I did ask them of Ms. Arnold earlier. And what it was was that this appeared to be the draft that had been presented last year.
There it goes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
However, in the intro paragraph, it does say May twenty twenty-two, but on
Not a rest of the script.
Correct. And let's see, yeah, because it's under item V seven, consideration in V eight, the dates are this year. But Ms. Mrs. Arnold did say that the amount listed for the cost is correct for this year. Because that was my concern. I thought that was the same amount from last year.
So the dollar amount is correct?
That yes, Mrs. Arnold.
Yes, when I made a copy of la- of this current year's MOU, I failed to change it in the title of the Google Doc, but everything within the document has been updated with next year's school year dates and the cost of this year.
Okay.
Well, this does say grants, so.
And then in the Rathdrum SRO MOU, I also had, I had a couple of questions. Under item three, city obligations, it says the city shall assign a patrol officer to the police department to work as an SRO at John Brown and Betty Keeper. But it's my understanding that the SRO also works at Mountain View?
He he does. His primary offices are at John Brown and Betty Keeper, but he visits Mountain View every day. The two elementarys are his primary focus simply because juvenile probation also spends time at Mountain View, so there's some double coverage there.
Okay, but I think if he's going to be there, we should identify that on this MOU.
Okay, I can change that for you.
Okay, and then this kind of is when we get into the healthcare MOUs. Under the city obligations, it says days when schools are not in session, SROs will be assigned to duties by the police department. I have several questions when we get to the healthcare MOUs or the the those MOUs. Because one of the MOUs states that we're running, that we have camp that's running during the summer. So I'm trying to understand, do we have an SRO during the summer for the schools that are running a summer school program? Okay. Okay. All right, and then also on item eight, term amendment renewal, it lists the twenty-one, twenty-two public school year. And I know last year, I thought we had addressed this, but they want a one-year written notice of intent to terminate.
That's what you approved last year.
Right, I'd really like that shown.
Okay, what would you like that changed to?
Six, thirty days would be great, but I don't think the city would go for that. Six months possibly or three months? I just think it would be sufficient enough for us to know within our budget if we're gonna be able to handle it for the next school year, but we won't know that a year in advance. So that needs to be changed. So does anybody else have input on that?
Well, whatever we have language-wise with the county and other
So change it to match that language?
Yeah, I mean, that would be, I mean, I would think that they should all be consistent. I think, and I do know we got explanation from the city last year, but I think it sort of proved this is an ongoing relationship, partnership.
Yeah, and and
In spirit.
Sorry. The intent from the city council last year was that the the district did make a decision to keep it, hold the relationship, and there was some hesitancy about going back in. Because they actually hire somebody to fill that patrol position and then they're, they've got one more person than what they're able to pay for. So they're just, they were just trying to protect themselves. But I do remember at that meeting that trustee Bain mentioned that cities' budgets are on a different cycle maybe than ours and that theirs are later.
Theirs are October one, September thirty.
And ours are start of July. So we have to make that decision by March for CFO Wallace to make sure that he's got our budget correct moving to approval with you in May. And so six months makes sense and might be a good compromise. But if you want it to be, we can kind of have proven to your point, trustee Grissom, that we're we're in it for the long haul and that we would prefer to have all three of our MOUs the same. So I can present that as well.
Which
That's the preference of the board.
With, I believe with the county as well, even though that one's not presented right now. But with Spirit Lake, it's thirty days. I mean, at best, if we completed our budget by May, that would still give them ninety days prior, you know, May, June, July, August, September, before they have to do theirs. So I think that would be sufficient time.
Except that they still have to have their budget adopted by Labor Day.
They have to have it adopted in May, but they're not preparing
No, I said Labor Day, not Memorial Day.
Okay.
Labor Day.
Labor Day, the first week in September. That was mixed up.
Yep.
Okay, so but still, that gives, I mean, from May to September, I I would think that's sufficient time for dogs to get along.
Cootney County MOU has that same duration as Spirit Lake.
Thirty days, okay. So, yeah. So those were my only corrections or issues with them. Does anybody else have any conversation or questions from assistant F? Hyphen Arnold for the moment.
I answered just about anything. So I will make the changes to the Rathdrum MOU and bring that back. That will require some conversation at the city to make sure that they're willing to make that change. And then the Cootney County MOU is not on this board agenda because they have had some people shifting around at at the their office. And the person that I needed to talk to about what the what next year's financial obligation for us would be has not gotten back to me yet. So that will come in June and then I'm hoping that I can bring the Rathdrum MOU back at the same time. The dollar amount on Rathdrum is accurate and based on what his salary will be next year.
So with that being said, I don't know if we want to move forward with a motion on the MOUs or to approve or whatever we're going to do with them.
I'm comfortable in approving them contingent upon agreement.
The corrections. Okay. All right, so we'll entertain a motion.
I would move that.
I'll second it. Hearing a motion and a second, all favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Would you say aye over your family's?
I haven't said any. I just have a problem with both of these. I do, because I have no parent feedback. I don't know that parents have read these and I know the parents like the SROs and all that, but you know, once again, I'm always reluctant, especially when it comes to these things and how much access they have to their child and understand if the parent truly understands that they're just not hanging out, making sure no bad guy shows up. That like there's an ongoing teaching and engagement in an office and private conversation, possibly that there that there's a lot of free rein with this officer and there's children. You know, and I I'm, that's my, and it's the same thing I spoke about last year.
Right.
So I would like to see some kind of parent feedback or at least parents are aware, you know, that this isn't just the door person. You know, when you read the MOU.
Right.
That's that's my only hesitation. So I'm gonna be a nay. I'll just say nay.
Okay, we have four yeas and one nay. Motion carries. That being said, though, uh, SRO? Do you think that we could figure out a way to include parents with respect to the presence of the SROs and their authority within, I mean, because they're not just they don't say monitoring the parking lot or, you know, the traffic flow. They're very interactive with our students, which is a good thing. I mean, they're 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 educating and they're bringing them on board with police presence and the the police aren't bad people and I I think
Fulfilling the relationships.
Yes, the relationships.
I think about more than what's spelled out in the MOU itself.
Well, I don't necessarily, I mean, well, the MOUs are public records.
They are public records. But I do hear what you're, what you're saying is I think we would get overwhelming support if we reached out to parents just based on the town hall meetings that we had following Parkland shooting in twenty eighteen. There was, there was great desire to do something. So what I'm wondering is Dr. Meyer will do her end of the year. Sir, does that, do we send one out to parents at the end of
October, annually, October.
So we could have that be part of that survey in October if the superintendent says they sent that out?
I'm more concerned that they literally understand the language in the MOU, not the presentation of the interpretation of the language.
Okay.
I I, that's what I want for them, you know, whether they scratch it off and say it's fine or not or whatever, that the responsibility of the SRO's presence and the MOU falls back on the parents. Like, here it is, if you're fine with it, we're fine with it too. I personally feel
Would you want us to send it out in the edgiblog that we're gonna have?
Yeah, anything.
And just say, just please read this and let us know if you have comments?
Yeah.
Just as an information item?
Right.
So you're not looking for a survey?
No, no, I just
Just an educational piece to let people know what the responsibility is, whether it's just a blurb in a newsletter or at a school.
Document. Yeah, just so they're aware which they can go.
To the MOU or
Yeah, the link could be right back to the agenda. That's all I wanted is, you know, more of that transparent thing.
We are sending an edgiblog home on May twenty-seventh, so I will just make sure that we have information.
Okay.
I have a question about it. So are these guys police officers?
So the, we have two different programs that we're running. The SRO is a school resource officer. They are law enforcement officers. And they share the cost of that particular position with the either the city or the county, depending on the agency. And then the armed guards are our employees. All of them are former law enforcement officers, but not current.
So what's their policy of questioning a kid without their parents?
SROs or either one?
Either one.
Um, we, we should be following the law, which says that unless it's exigent circumstances, which means that the child's in imminent danger, um, parents are notified that 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 something has occurred and that law enforcement has questions and they have the opportunity to be there.
Because I know they've confiscated phones and they've interviewed kids without their parents or
So that's something I can follow up with.
Yeah, I mean, this is in the past. I just, from my experience, I've, I know this has happened. And I don't know what they have access to, like grades. Do they have access to grades?
Yeah, it's all in there. If you read the MOU, it literally spells out the records they have access to, the private office, the, I forget how it words it. Yeah, there's just a lot of, a lot of different things. The other thing I have problem with too is educational resource and understanding the application in law enforcement of criminal laws to the school administrators. I think that's sort of a sketchy place because if we're giving legal advice that should come from an attorney, not a police officer. I mean, I know they know their job, but from a district perspective, right? I'm thinking about the district and its liability, right? And if an administrator or a teacher or whomever acts upon what the officer is telling him, that might be true for the officer, but it might not be true for the administrator or the teacher. Therefore, now the now the district's liable. You know, and the teacher or the administrator says, well, you know.
Well, there's been, there's been a couple of times where the school will just go, oh, it's not our business. When it's happening at school, they'll just back off and say it's a cop issue. And then, you you know, there has to be guys
I I think the language is fairly explicit, I mean, in what it says and how much, you know, their job entails of and all my saying is like with everything else, I always feel this burden of obligation to make sure that the parent understands,
Right.
you know, the environment, because their students are not, that's bad or good or any, I just want to, the parent has to take responsibility for that. So that's all about my discussion.
So the SRO at the high school, he works as a cop on the weekends and stuff like that?
He he's not an SRO. He's an armed guard. So he's our employee.
Okay.
Um, he is a reserve officer. He doesn't get paid by the city, but he's a reserve officer for right now, but he is our employee.
I just heard he goes out with the police sometimes.
Yeah, on the weekends.
Yeah. Okay. Yes. Yeah.
What, a reserve officer?
I was just wondering.
Thank you so much.
I only have one more report.
Yes.
I apologize for it.
No.
I'm always troubled by this verbiage, armed guard.
Okay.
And I would ask that we seek a new name or type for that position.
Okay. Do you have any, I'm just curious.
Because why?
No, 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 no. I know why, but I'm just curious what other names you might want to entertain.
I don't know, to be honest.
Okay.
You know, I like the SRO approach and so something that's compatible with that, I think would be appropriate.
Okay.
But the name we stuck on that makes it sound like a different kind of institution.
Armed resource officer, an ARO.
That would be better.
Okay. All right, well, we will, can you note that down, that we need to interview something like that? Thank you. Okay, so yeah, we did go on that. Okay. Uh, moving on to the fundraiser request to buy a brick. Mr. Gordon of Mountain View would like to do a buy a brick fundraiser to raise funds for a Mountain View muse, Mountain View muse mural to be painted in the school gym. Uh, the bricks are currently being stored at the maintenance departments and they are the chimney bricks. I believe that the original bricks from the Rathrum High School. So it's a little piece of history that people could be buying. He doesn't say though. Yeah, what he's going to charge for the bricks.
I recognized that when we were going through the board agenda tonight, so I did reach out to Mr. Gordon. Um, he was thinking fifty dollars or a hundred dollars, um, but definitely was interested to know if the board had any thoughts about that. His their plan is that they would become part of the landscape and be there.
With the number of bricks they have, they have one of those two rigs, can they raise enough money to pay for the mural?
I can verify that with him, but I believe that that's how he landed on those.
I was just curious for my own information, but I I think whatever they come up with, it's their project and that was awesome idea. My only other question is all the murals in all the other gyms at all the other schools, do they have to raise their own money to get it painted? Their murals or does the district pay for those murals?
I know the murals at Bennekefer were all painted by volunteer parents or grandparents. Uh, the mural that's in Lakeland High School Gym was a legacy gift from one of the graduating classes. The like the mural at Timberlake High School is also a legacy gift from one of the senior classes. So, um, to my knowledge, unless. Donations to you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Questions? I think it's awesome idea.
Yeah. It'll be engraved in his papers. That's really cool. Any further discussion? All right, so I'll go ahead and entertain a a motion on, I've lost my place. Sorry. There it is. I'll entertain a motion on the buy a brick fundraiser request.
I have approval of the project.
During motion, a second all papers say aye. Aye. Any opposed? During none, the motion carries. Moving on to discussion items. Uh, what was left under the discussion item not for action was the second step curriculum. That is, um, I believe that was approved by the previous board. But we did have some parent concerns about the curriculum and it's not something that this board's been privy to as far as what it is. So, um, discussions.
I mean, it's curriculum, I think it should just follow the same step or the parents. I think the parents already get a letter sent, don't they? And they have to sign the letter.
Do they? Okay.
Yeah.
There's, if I say something wrong, you can correct me. My understanding is probably like four to six weeks prior to specific to the personal safety, which is part of the second step. The letter goes out kind of outlining that parents are invited to come in and view it if they want. Several parents have taken up across the district, multiple counselors to come see it. Sounds like it's, I mean, there's only a handful of parents who have actually opted out once they see the program and see those specific pieces. And so they have the ability to opt out if they don't want to participate and then we just find something else to do during that lesson time. So, um, they're fully aware of what's happening, when it's happening and then they, you know, are able to come. You, we've actually had parents come in and observe the lesson while it's being taught, just to make sure they're good with it. So, um, the counselors are really transparent in the process, specific to the personal safety lessons that are a part of it. It's one of the units.
Do you know who the, um, the publisher is of this curriculum by any chance?
A commission for children? Oh, for children.
For children.
I have to come out of the.
Okay, so what I hear you saying is that on the second step curriculum, this is something that there is parent involvement in from this whole. Okay.
We can see the same process and obviously we have still have parents that don't understand it's there. And I I know the schools send out their communication or however they reach out to the the parents, but in my estimation, it falls in the same spot that the sources of strength does.
Okay. Any other input on this curriculum?
May I ask a question just to clarify my question? Uh, so this particular curriculum was approved by a former board, so are you wanting us to bring it back for approval by this board? I just want clarification of what, when you're talking, trusty person about following our curriculum process. I just want some clarity, I guess.
It it sounds like there's a communication breakdown somehow, whether the parent just missed it or what have it. But it's not the first time I've heard parents concerned about it. So I feel like there's somehow we're missing this communication. When you say it was approved by the other board, the only thing I have is board book, which goes back to 2012. There's never any history for me to feel comfortable to communicate, yes, this was approved, this is when it was approved, the other board, all of what, that that doesn't exist in our records.
And this would have been prior to that, 2012. I was still principal.
2014. I was principal still. It was approved.
Okay.
Because we used it while I was there.
Well, I just want to make sure that I'm hearing you right, so we know what our course of action is.
No, and I I hear you. Part of my struggle though is when we did the curriculum workshop where all the curriculum was brought forward, this wasn't there and neither was SOS. So it's 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 just not wanting to be caught like a deer in the headlights when you've got a parent that's asking you questions and you know nothing about it.
You haven't seen it.
And you're like, I'll I'll get back to you because I don't know anything. It's 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 challenging. And so we did the workshop and we still never saw it. So it's it's, we'd just like to be kept informed of what's going on within our district. So we can not seem like we don't know what's going on in our district when parents ask us questions.
Right. I just, yeah, I I'm not opposed to bringing it back if that's the process that you want. I just wanted to clarify that it has been in use for quite a while.
What would be your recommendation?
Well, um, it it, I know it was approved because I was the principal at the time, so, um, I I think I guess what I hear Board Chair Thompson saying is that this board has not had the opportunity to pursue it and see it. Um, we need to have our annual curriculum workshop. Um, so we can definitely make sure that those materials for both programs are there for you to to view. And then, um, as part of the conversation, um, we, one of the things we've kind of been transitioning to is more the idea of the opting in instead of opting out.
Right.
And so maybe for the person, it is just the personal safety, I think, that parents sometimes are struggling with. And we've, we're in a kind of weird place, um, just socially when, um, there's a lot of angst for parents about some of, um, those kinds of things that were just in the school. And so if we, after you've looked at the materials and you get to see them, if you, if the board feels like we would feel more comfortable if parents had to opt in and we actually had written permission for each child, which is what we also do, just so you know, for all of our, um, anything that is kind of sex ed kind of topics that they like the personal development, growth and development videos that we show at fifth grade, those are opt in. Kids don't get to participate in that without a signed permission slip. At the eighth grade and then in the high school level, um, I know we, uh, the eighth grade is is definitely has always been an opt in permission. And then we modified when we worked on policy, I think last summer. We we wanted the, um, the 10th grade health, um, that unit also to be opt in. So we could, um, that would be my recommendation is to give you the opportunity to look at the materials and then, um, make sure that you are comfortable, I guess, with what that is, but, um, that we then transition from an opt out to an opt in, which then all parents whose kids are participating have had the opportunity to look at the materials, ask questions and make a decision for their child. That would be my recommendation.
I mean, that's fair.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's great.
Good resolution. Thank you so much.
Okay, next item, uh, for discussion is the the application of policy 3010 and the Reach Academy. Because we have gone, we've stepped away from open enrollment to where we've in a sense, closed our borders. The Reach Academy is a hybrid online format. So how is policy 3010 going to apply to Reach Academy? Is it going to apply to them in the sense that you can only accept students within our district that want to come to this program? Or are we somehow needing to create a policy specific to Reach and the students that can attend Reach Academy?
I would think being that Reach, um, is doing sort of the school and the school, I mean, I think the policy would just apply with the same emotion that was made on it before is that whoever's there is, I mean, it it it's not my understanding, it's, you know, it's changed a little bit, so I I think it just stays the way it is. And if you're grandfathered in, you're grandfathered in, I think that's.
Okay. I agree with that. Okay. Because it is not just an online presence, it's we do have them in. And you know, it is a hybrid, so I, yeah. I agree with it. Okay. So. Okay. So, uh, I'll follow up. Thank you. Can you let the Reach people know? All right. This is just so overwhelming here. All right, moving on to the counseling MOUs. We have the Lake City Counseling and the Heritage Health Counseling or Heritage Health MOU. I've got some questions on both of them. I'd like to start with the Heritage Health. Who, um, sorry, I'm trying to make this fitting me into my little window.
Chair Thompson.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to, um, bring to your attention that you originally sent one version and then you were given an additional version and they're slightly different.
Oh.
They are digital.
Okay.
So I wanted to point that out to you.
We only have one version uploaded. Okay. That would be, we're figuring out.
I'm not sure what the first one uploaded was, but the one that has the chairman of Heritage Health's signature is the correct one.
Has who's signature?
The chairman of of.
Heritage Health.
Yes. His signature is the most recent one. That's the most recent one. I'm not sure what was uploaded before.
The one with Brian Wallace's signature, but this one is a new signature from Brian. Because it doesn't say Brian Wallace CFO underneath. So if there were changes, it would be good to know what those changes.
Well, the current one that we have with Heritage Health is the one that the CEO at signed.
Well, both of these were signed by our CFO. Only one was signed by Heritage Health.
That's the, that's the current one that we have because I checked with.
So changes were made to, because we were uploaded with this one, but there are changes because right now there's already a third paragraph that wasn't on this one?
So you probably, according to the precedent earlier in this meeting, you probably have to table that to have time to review and put on the next. That's, and again, that's the one that we already have in place, but that the board wanted to see. So, um, I think we should table it and put that on to the next agenda. So we have time to review it.
This, this is a discussion item. It's a, we don't, it's not, we have the option to take action on it after we get through the discussions. But it's not actionable right at the moment.
And I think that, I think that the district administrators want to bring MOUs once a year at a certain time. Is that what you guys decided? So I think that would, they could bring back again when they bring all the SOF MOUs.
Okay, well, this one that is dual signed is dated 2020. This one that is single signed, signed is 2022. So Brian, did you, this, this 2022 one, is this the one that's circulating for this year or is it this 2021?
I believe, I'm not the one that I think has a signature of the other party was the one that came and they just asked me to assign as a rule from previous MOUs. I believe that's the most current.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, the Heritage Health one, unless I'm mistaking on what I'm reading, is only operating during summer months? Because that's what the MOU says and they call it camp services?
Yeah, there's a, I mean, we did a small camp last year with Heritage Health. As part of one of the summer programs that we did.
But that that's all this is speaking to is camp services. It's it's not.
I can sort of think of two separate things.
Okay, well, this was the one that I actually have. These are called.
The Heritage Health School Based Services is the signature with Mike Baker. The other MOU was a, um, was a, Heritage Health does a summer camp and they use our facility. And we traditionally have not done an MOU for the summer camp. Um, there was a recent conversation with Heritage Health that we should have an MOU for the summer camp. We've never had an MOU specifically for that.
Okay.
Um, because Heritage Health has always continued to do therapy over the summer
Okay.
with our kids, um, doing individual therapy, but in the summer camp they're doing group therapy.
Okay.
So so that might be where some of the confusion is.
Okay.
So the signature with Mike Baker is, that's the most current for our Heritage Health Services and that's. The additional MOU you're looking at, I'm not quite sure how that got circulated, but
Okay.
that was a conversation of do we need to have an additional separate MOU for the summer camp specifically?
Okay.
And we didn't necessarily believe we needed to because Heritage Health has already been providing services throughout the school year, including the summer.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
I hear what you're saying. No, 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 I thank you for your input. It sounds like though, this actual one that is dated 2020, that's signed by Mike Baker and Mr. Wallace, is one the board should really look at because it is the 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 whole
That's the most.
school year.
Yeah, that's the most currently we're able to find. And there were some changes in leadership at Heritage Health and for, um, for our district as well, they was overseeing it. And so it took quite a big, big bit of digging to try to locate
Oh.
the MOU.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Then. All right, then if it's the most current one, then it's expired, because it says twenty-twenty. So we would need to find out if we can get a new one implemented for, or presented for this upcoming school year?
Yes, absolutely. And that was our intention, was to ask going into the school year, upcoming school year, to have an update.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, because all my comments are on this one for the camp services, which was what was provided to us.
Okay.
Because I didn't, I didn't know we did that. So that's a good thing to know.
And does the other one include the summer as well, so that it's for you?
Not this twenty-twenty-one.
Two differences.
Well.
Or will it hold one corrected version of this book?
That I don't know. It doesn't sound like it, because this one for twenty-twenty-two is for camps. Okay. But the one that we have uploaded in our board book is for camp services, which is apparently a summer program.
Oh, my God.
And it is dated for the twenty-twenty-two year. Apparently there is, because that was my, that was my question, was I see Heritage Health in our buildings, and this is only for the summer, and I didn't quite understand. But there's this one, which is dated for twenty-twenty, May of twenty-twenty, which I believe addresses their services that they offer throughout the whole year. So
I moved a table to allow administration time to clarify all the issues that have been pointed out.
Okay. Yeah, it is a discussion item, so we don't have to discuss them.
We don't have to take action on them, but we can advise administration to get that clarified and cleared up.
Yes. We need to bring back. A clear understanding of what is going on with Heritage Health. And then with respect to
Go ahead. Have input, now that we've discussed these, if the public has no access to, they need to be put in this agenda?
Okay.
I mean, we don't have access to what you were just handed, so.
You're ready?
You know, also, we need to identify who you were having conversation with out there, because people who may watch will not be able to know who was speaking to you.
Okay.
Neither will the minutes reflect that. Which was, I don't know.
Heather, but I'm not her last name.
Heather Hamilton? She's a counselor?
Yeah.
She's one of the counselors.
Having Heritage Health please on.
Okay. Is that something that we need to discuss in our board norms? Is that when somebody comes forward, they need to introduce themselves and? Yeah. On the Lake City one, which I guess we just discussed what my questions are. I don't know if anybody else had questions for Lake City. They're asking for a consent for services and a release of information, and I just want to make sure that the release is, because this one does, Heritage Health doesn't state this, but this one does state that the, it's a consent for services and a release of information between the school district and the provider, to be signed by the parent and guardian. I'm just curious what information's being released, if it's the health information or the academic information. We're also.
Go ahead. Yeah, the release of information is based on what the therapist and the school counselor deemed would be appropriate to share, and then the parent has to sign off on it.
So it's sharing information between our school counselor and the provider's healthcare worker?
Yes, and then the parent has to sign off on any of that.
Okay. And we're doing, we're allowing medication management in school? Because it states that the provider can provide medication monitoring and medication consultation with and for Medicaid-eligible students, as long as they are credentialed members of the of the
If that's something that they would, if that's something that they would have, if they would see a therapist after hours in a normal therapist's office, and that would be part of their duties as approved by parents, then we're saying that that would be something they would do with parent approval at school. Because basically, this and Heritage Health, the entire intention is that families who really need therapy, individual for the kids, which is not under a school counselor's ongoing individual therapy, is not in the school counselor's job responsibilities.
Correct.
And so what the intention of this program is, is that families who have struggles getting the students and/or family to counseling, to therapy outside of school hours, whether they work, whether they have more than one job, they work, whether at some point, sometimes transportation, gas, money, several items come, are obstacles and barriers to be able to provide our students, when the families need it and want it, the ability to interact with the therapist. So this is a way, it's community-school-based therapy. So they use the school during the school day, and, you know, the kids are transported by a bus, they're at school, they have the therapy appointment, the therapist comes to us instead of going to the therapy. It's almost as if, and our, that's what the MOU is, is we're giving them a space. We went through this, again, we went through this several years ago, but when we first started it, we went through it with the board, and maybe that would be good to do again. But the whole intention behind it is to provide services for our families to take, really to overcome barriers for our kids to get mental health services.
Kind of happens during the school day?
Yes. That's why there's an MOU.
Do you have any feel for how much class time is missed by students?
Well, it depends on her kid. They try not to take them out of classes, but at some point, trustee Jones, with Maslow's hierarchy of needs, if there's something so significant going on with the student and/or family, the learning doesn't take place if they don't get the therapy anyway, so this, I mean, they do try to not take them out of core classes. They have elective classes, they have, you know, recesses, they have other time that they can use them. But again, this on Maslow's hierarchy of needs, that this does take precedent. And again, it's all parent-supported, so it's not our decision, it's a parent-supported plan.
I hear you. I'm just more concerned about the provider and collaborating with our staff for medication management. That seems a bit risky. I'm also curious where the operational protocol is. Our operational protocol for mental health providers is, I've never seen that. Because it states, provider will operate consistent with LJSD's operating protocol for mental health providers. And so being bound in this contract, we're not obligated financially to them. It appears they're billing for these services to either Medicaid or private insurance. If a child doesn't have Medicaid or doesn't have private insurance, are they paying cash for services?
I'm, I'm not sure if people ever pay cash. Do you know? You have to.
Do I need it?
Yeah.
Heather Hamilton, school counselor. I can clarify a few things for you. As far as the, the medication management goes, no medications are dispersed through the therapist, the therapist is not a licensed physician. Medication management means that the therapist, Lake City Counseling or Heritage Health, in coordination with the family, may determine that that child may need further evaluation, a psychiatric evaluation, if they feel that they may be in need of psychiatric medications, and they may be communicating that with the school counselor, like, hey, kid was just put on antidepressant, can you please monitor their symptoms? Or student has bipolar, they're going to be taking this medication, just please monitor, let us know how they're doing. Similar to what we could be doing, the parents are coming and letting us know they have a student with a disability and they're on Ritalin or whatnot. But I just want to clarify, there's no medications being dispersed.
Okay.
School counselors cannot make recommendations for anybody to take medications.
We hope not.
That is outside of our school. But what, what it does mean is that we're communicating on behalf of the kid to make sure that we're monitoring symptoms. And the parents have signed all of those consents.
Okay.
And then as far as the time for counseling services, those are thirty-minute sessions, and the parents are aware of that, their thirty-minute session times, and we obviously try to use like other times, recess times, you know, outside of their core classes, but they're aware upfront when they're enrolling in services with Lake City or Heritage, that it's a thirty-minute counseling session. And it is shorter, so it doesn't take as much from classroom instruction. Typically, in an outpatient agency, sessions are fifty minutes.
Right.
Okay.
What's travel time out of class, getting to and fro, so I.
Right.
Oh, sure.
And then that was official. And then you had the last question, can you restate that? You wanted me to clarify it.
She asked if they pay cash if they don't have Medicaid.
Oh, yeah, so, so Heritage Health, one of the reasons that we like to work with Heritage Health, they have very comprehensive services. So they are one of the only agencies in town that offer a sliding fee scale for families that may have difficulty paying for services, and they also have case managers available. So if families can't afford the sliding fee scale services and don't qualify for Medicaid, they have a case manager that will work with them to get them qualified through the YES program, to get money to pay for the services. And we do have quite a few students that are receiving services through the YES program.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't know if the board knows this, but we have a waiting list. That's why Heather actually went out to look for additional, you know, that's why we have the Lake City one, it was actually thanks to her, because she's coordinating this for all of our schools. We actually have a waiting list at all schools. Like, we cannot, there's not enough therapists to handle the load that we have, which just makes me sad for students and families that want this, but that's why she went out to Lake City, to get an additional agency to assist.
We currently have two schools that are without a therapist, and that would be my school at elementary school and also Spirit Lake. And then we had to split the Heritage Health therapist, and he's actually doing like a partial day at Twin Lakes Elementary School, so that he could serve to go to junior high, because they have an extensive waitlist and some really high-risk students on that waitlist. But yes, there's a waitlist at every school for, for services of parents requesting this service. And we just don't have enough providers, and that's an issue that all, you know, workers are having right now, agencies, but even counseling agencies as well. But Lake City would be able to provide a therapist for our two sites that currently are without providers.
Okay. Yes, so those are my questions, with respect to these MOUs.
Appreciate it, Claire.
Thank you, Heather.
No, we have no policy. We have no procedure. We don't know how it works, we don't know how the parents get there, the kids get there, we don't, I mean. I think it needs to be fixed, but this is going to continue, and it needs to be a policy and there needs to be a clear understanding and what it looks like. You know? There isn't.
When was this put onto the schools? If you have all these kids waiting for therapy, when did it become the school's responsibility? With taxpayers, I'm just, I'm just asking.
There's no, it's no cost to taxpayers.
Okay. What I'm saying, you have kids waiting for, to see a therapist at our schools, right?
Right, I, I think what it speaks to is the fact that we have a huge mental health crisis in our nation right now.
Right.
And our district is no different. And anyone who's read, you know, everything for the last two years over COVID, there's a lot of isolation, there's a lot of self-harm, suicide ideation has gone up, the counselors would tell you, there is a huge mental health response needed, our school counselors cannot handle it. And before COVID even came, we put this into place, and it was my idea, because I had families reaching out to me, so I reached throughout the state, I found a district in Boise that had an alternative school and one elementary school that had an MOU that was working with the private agencies. So I started talking to Heritage Health up here, put out some feelers, and I worked for about a year. That was probably five years ago, worked for about a year with somebody who's no longer even there. But to design an MOU with the current board at the time, to be able to provide services similar to what I said, families need this, and students cannot even get to the level of learning if they don't have basic needs met, and they don't have safety and security. And, and so this is vital, that we have to provide this service for families, so that students are able to learn. And so we put together an MOU that was approved, and we continue to try to grow, the program has just grown, the needs from the families, as Heather Hamilton said, these are families that come and say, we really need this service. It's not, we're not telling them, we're not, we're not the ones saying they need to get something done, they're the ones coming to us. So all we're doing is providing the space, instead of the family taking away time, like trustee Bane said, and driving to an appointment, taking off work, driving back, we're just bringing the therapist into the school, into a space. So all we're doing is providing an actual space for, for free. We're, that's our part of what we're providing.
I was just, I, I don't have a problem with counselors behalf of the school, I just was trying to figure out.
Yeah, no taxpayer dollars are being used for it at all. I just want. Yeah, it's really designed as a win-win, that we are helping overcome those barriers for services for families. And a lot of, if they're on Medicaid, they're economically disadvantaged families that are having other issues in their life, you know, they're confounding them being able to get to services outside of school hours anyway. And trying to be cognizant of the fact that school is school, but I think the counselors do a really good job of trying to put help with the schedule, so that they can meet as many needs as possible. But I think it speaks to our district. We're the first district in the entire state where, where we offer this at all our schools, and there's a waiting list. Now, since we started it, Port Alene is starting it, Emples Falls is now starting it as well. So again, it's, I think it's been really important. And I think if you were to serve the families, there would be overwhelming support for it.
I don't think there's any doubt that there's support for this program.
Yeah.
Or that there is, there is support, that there is need for this program.
Yeah.
And it's just understanding what we're binding ourselves to legally. I mean, for Heritage Health, they have a clause that states that they can use any subcontractor to perform services. That seems a little concerning, because we're hiring to, or we're contracting with Heritage Health, and then it's going out from there. So in a sense, it's, it, the concept is a brokerage.
It's, Heritage Health has had some difficulty retaining therapists, and so they will occasionally subtract with specialties. They also have medical services and behavioral health services, physical therapy services, and lots of other services that they may refer students to and some contract with. But in our schools, the service being provided is one day a week for a thirty-minute increment. The parents are aware of that, there's a protocol when they come into the building, they have to sign in at the front office, they have a badge, they, they're oriented to our federal and safety protocol, and everybody knows where these students are at all times, and when their session is done, they go back to the office and they call down the next student. So they're always, they're always accounted for, but that's a part of that training process when they sign on. If there's any additional questions that you have about the days that they're in the building, how many students they see, I can certainly get that to you, if that would be helpful. would be helpful.
I think that um. I think the board, I think it's a sensitive subject and I think the board, because we are tasked with governance and there is no governance for this piece for the board perspective. There's nothing. And being that we are contacted by parents and community members and all that, when things come up, it would be nice for the board to understand um the breadth of the need and how many students are we serving in the district, you know? What, what does that look like? I mean, because the other thing, um, and I know I've asked this in the past with other, other programs is um. You know, I don't know if success is not the right word, but you know, what, what is the measurement of this thing other than we know now, obviously, since it's been here, we've got waiting lists that there's great need um for this kind of thing. But I, I just think the board needs to get a governance handle on this whole thing to begin with. And it would be nice to have more information, that would be great.
Well, the, the treatment planning and compliance with state law and documentation and liability, that all falls on the therapist, the provider.
Right.
And the agency just as um they would if they were taking their student to uh the therapist outside of school hours. And we do have families that have to pull kids from classroom to school day to take them up to appointments. Um, what I can tell you is that this year we did start a district acuity tracking spreadsheet to help see the needs in each building. So uh each, we have a tab on the spreadsheet with each building and it has um how many students are being served by Heritage Health, how many are on the waitlist, um, how many students uh have had to be hospitalized psychiatrically, how many suicide assessments we've had to do. Um, and so we have graphs for every, every building. Um, what we've been seeing is that we are continuing to see an increasing mental health crisis. What I can say emphatically, prior to having these services in our buildings, um, our school counselors were being um overburdened with students that were actively in mental health crisis.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't think they're even qualified to get into this field, absolutely. That, and that is part of the thing. The governance I'm speaking about, I have no doubt that you guys have your ducks in the row. But here's the thing, when the public comes to the school district, there is nothing that the board has done to defend the district. Because by law, we have to have some kind of policy or procedure. There's nothing. And yet this practice is happening in the district and the board has done nothing to govern it. So that's my thing is that if there was a suit, if there was a discrepancy, if there was anything, I mean, other than, you know, what you guys have in place. I'm just trying to say that the board, I, I don't question anything you guys are doing, but that the board needs to decide.
So I guess if there's any information that you feel that would be beneficial to help clarify what this looks like beyond what you can see in the MOU, I can certainly look into that. Um, I um, I can also share our spreadsheet with you, um, our district acuity tracking spreadsheet that looks at every school and how we're doing this for our mental health crisis code. Um, that was so that we could have that available to administration. Because what, what we're seeing in the schools and in our counseling office is not always something that you guys are privy to, but it is, it is very, very critical.
And I don't know that we need to know every little detail we need to know, you know, like way up here in high, you know.
But we can.
Overall.
We can tell you how many, how many students are being served in each building and how many students are on the waitlist in that building. So that's all broken down by, by school. And we can certainly share that with you.
There's uh one other component I haven't really spoken to, and maybe you don't have much data on it, but I'm assuming that at some point these young folks will pass out of the program, hopefully. I mean, that would be an objective, right?
Well, the goal with, with any therapy service is that you get to a point where you're functioning so well that you no longer need services. So we do have students that graduate from services. We also have students drop out of services because of, you know, they're relocating or, or whatnot. But what we have seen is a drastic improvement in their functioning at school when they are getting all of the supports that they need.
And that's the piece I was talking to you, I hate to call it a success rate, but I didn't know what else to term it.
Yeah, that would be data that Heritage Health would be tracking as far as um like the um, the graduation rates and that sort of thing. Um, it, it's also very contingent on the individual. I mean, there's individuals that have a profound mental illness and disabilities and they require long-term. And then there's other individuals that, you know, maybe it was a stressor, a parental divorce or something like that that was more situational, they not require as much time, so it really just depends. I mean, they see the gamut of, you know, stress from a divorce to bipolar, schizophrenia, sexual abuse, psychiatric hospitalization. So you're seeing the whole endulum there. But if they're getting services, um, they have a diagnosable mental illness or they would not be eligible for services through the um program, through the agency.
Well, I think from a, from a governance standpoint, I, I hear what you're saying, uh, but from a governance standpoint, I think the MOU dictates a lot of the government that takes place, plus the schools have their protocols as to how to handle students and or visitors in the building for whatever kinds of purposes they're there for. You know, I don't know that we've got anything that um relates all of that, but the pieces, I think, are mostly there.
Right, yeah, we just need to put it all in policy and say that when they visit the building, they'll follow policy. And when they, like, we've done with the special ed health manual and all those kinds of things.
That they follow the, our visitor protocol and all of that. But if there's any additional comments or clarifications, you can just let me know. We can certainly take a look at that. The Lake City counseling would be for next school year for those two sites, Spirit Lake and Elementary School.
I'm surprised they can step into that role.
Um, Heritage Health did have, we did have therapists in, in every building at one point, um, but they had, there's been a high turnover with therapist agencies and they have to open to their own practices and our um schools that were more rural and a bit further away had difficulty retaining a therapist. And Heritage Health has done a great job. I mean, they've been actively trying to recruit and they had somebody that was signed on to start this year. And then right before the school year, they, they went through, um, which was super unfortunate. So.
Well, Lake City has a, it's either a nine or an eleventh month waitlist to get into their agency. So it surprises me that they can take on the school when they can't.
They've hired some new therapists and they're actively, Lake City is actively growing. So, but they, they felt that they would be able to meet the need um the two sites like one day.
Any further discussion on those MOUs?
Thank you so much, Brian.
Next for discussion, we have the IBB updates. Um, well, I need an IBB update, but we have the minutes from the IBB meetings provided. I wasn't at the last meeting. Mr. Jones, please share a class.
Well, since we have three or four other folks in the room, I would invite them to chip in anytime they feel, you know, you do so. You have the minutes from our sessions, which are a little bit hard to follow in some sense.
Yes, they are.
But, uh, you know, we had some discussion at the last meeting about what we had done to that point. Most of what we have done since then has to do with the real gut issues, which are money issues. Uh, last session, we spent considerable time talking about insurance program, uh, the various kinds of options that are available to our staff and the costs of those and how they might apply to individuals depending on how they pick and choose their, their plan that suits them or whether or not they're employee only or employee and family or, you know, some combination of that. And I think we have that piece of the puzzle pretty well under control. Uh, we also spent considerable time talking about salary schedule and how that might get applied going into the future. The, the, the real issue always becomes, you know, what can we afford to do as compared to what the L A A would like to have us do? And I always like to couch it in the language of, we would love to do more, but this is all we can do. And I think there was, we reached some of that point uh in the last meeting and laid some information and some of those related issues on the table. The L A A, from what I understand, is going to be meeting with their membership on, I think, the sixteenth, next Monday. And uh present the information that has come onto the table thus far and try to get some reaction from their membership about whether or not they would be willing to accept. We have, they're not going to do a application vote, I don't think, at that point. But from, from what I heard the other day, they would provide each member with a kind of worksheet. And they could plug in where they fit on the salary schedule and whether or not they're going to receive AP money and, and, you know, extracurricular, all the things that might do, so that they can compare what they're currently receiving in compensation with what they would receive for coming here and related compensation. And when that's all said and done, it's a pretty lucrative package, at least from our point of view, uh, in terms of what we've been offering. And, you know, Brian's a little more into the numbers side of things, so I would invite him to share any thoughts that he has on that.
Well, we're, we're really looking at, you know, our revenues are increasing, um, really two, if we just look at state revenues, two primary areas, one, enrollment rule, which is significant. Um, and two, the increase to uh the health benefits was on the discretionary. So it seemed clear from the intent of that legislation that the increased discretionary, you know, the letter of the law says that you can, you know, this is an increase for medical discretionary. If you don't spend on medical, you can spend it on discretionary. But as, you know, superintendents and this manager are talking to people at the state department level, you know, the expectation, we will be reporting, did we do that? Um, there's no, I, I don't even know what the report would look like, probably like, won't you spend on medical, but you know? Um, so effectively that enhancement based on enrollment number next year is about one point five million dollars, when that's change. So we, we're directing those dollars towards enhancing the medical benefits across the board. Um, and that's what Trystie Jones had talked about there.
I might just interject that that, that it was a, a point of contention or a point of discretion, I should say, uh, with the L A A. And that one of their kind of counter proposals was to tear off part of that funding for medical and move it over into the salary schedule as discretionary money. And we have basically resisted that, saying that in town, with all of this, if that's supposed to be spent for medical purposes and the district will have an obligation to report on that to the state as a follow-up as to what we do this coming year, then we want to be able to report that we have a good program.
Right.
And the other dollars that we have, when we talk about the general fund or the, you know, the increased dollars we're getting really for, for enrollment funding. And, and so, you know, some of those conversations just have been, well, those additional dollars, since it's not, it still is a temporary rule, um, that, um, you know, and I understand it from the L A A's perspective, well, that's the dollars, let's use them. And we, you know, are saying, you know, you, at some point, you do have to sort of budget with some of your revenues and move forward. And I'm sure our neighboring districts and district cost of state will be doing that, but um concerned that we would put all of the dollars there because if it did go away, um, you know, you'd have to adjust over a couple of years. And, you know, we definitely have reserves where we could, you know, if it did something like that happen, have a soft landing to be able to have some time to be planful. But I guess that, that's just, you know, there's other needs too, so we didn't want to spend all the increased revenues just on salaries and benefit increases. So, you know, and, and that's sort of a typical conversation every year, honestly. It's, the numbers are a little more this year, um, you know, as far as the increased revenues, so able to do the medical, have some increases, pass through the AP money, the advanced placement, which, you know, we're a rarity of that, most districts are not doing that. So part of the conversations have been, that you can hear, you know, if someone wants to recording is, you know, a, a lot of part of salary-based apportionment, you know, roughly five hundred thousand dollars increase next year because of the AP money. Well, that's going to specific people, so that money is not available for an overall raise. If they, a lot of districts are using that money as an overall raise. So we could have a higher percentage overall raise if they're sharing the wealth, but, you know, half of our teachers are, are getting that based on, so it's really, you know, sort of that choice of how they go. And so I think that's, you know, weighing how that goes out in the future, I think will be an ongoing conversation. But I, I believe we'll save the AP, pass through this year for sure.
Well, I do hope we um improve benefit package because when I was comparing it with the others, I mean, because I always hear how, you know, we're, we don't pay as well as Coeur d'Alene or Post Falls with the entry level. And, and I would beg to differ based off of what was on the state website, that we actually do pay more. But our benefit package is actually much higher out of pocket for our staff. And I don't think that, I, I'd like to see us be able to bring that down so it's more reasonable for people to afford the insurance.
And that actually will happen, which I'm willing to probably explain it better than I can, but uh the added dollars going into the medical program, a lot of people choose better plans uh with less out-of-pocket expense, which means that their take-home pay will actually be increased as a result of that.
Right, right. That'd be great. I mean, at least that's one small little area.
Yeah, but that's a, yeah, that's, that's an important consideration, yeah.
It is.
I don't know, Dr. Myers might have some added comment.
Well, I, I, I wish that Jason was here, I think he had a game, especially they can get a game in when they have sunny weather and not rain, because they get a lot of rain out. Um, I do also want to say that the, they're going, wanting to work, meet with their membership, and they weren't able to do that till next Monday. So our next session would be Tuesday here. Um, and we're hoping that people will be staying till, we'll get a sense from the membership. Um, and then hopefully we'll be, that will be the last night as far as us getting the proposal to go to the membership for application and to the, then after that to the board for approval. Um, so we might need to have request discussion session if that happens so that HR cutting hand can print new contracts if it's all approved around the horn.
Right.
Always nice to get those contracts out before the teachers leave.
Right. Well, I, I think I also, Board Chair Thompson does know this, that we do have some surrounding districts that are already releasing contracts. Um, and, and Post Falls did, um, I got a text today, and Post Falls settled last night. So um, Coeur d'Alene hasn't officially started yet, but I think they've been doing some behind-the-work scenes work so that I think theirs will go quicker. Um, and I, I just do want to say that it does put us at a disadvantage if we haven't settled because there's so many open positions right now. Um, it's, the competition for staff is different than it was.
It's, the competition for staff is different than it was two years ago, four years ago, and not that I want to rush through it, but I do certainly want to make sure that we're timely, that we're taking our due diligence to be timely, so.
Okay. Any other input? All right. Moving on to budget, can I?
We have not met and won't be meeting again this year. There was a difference in interpretation as to what the budget committee was, the intent of the budget committee, between Brian's understanding and what my understanding was, and so that will be changed for next year, but as of now, that's the budget committee is done for this year.
Okay, so what happened in the budget committee? I mean, what did you do? Have you seen numbers? Did you help decide numbers? Did you?
Nope. Nope. And that was the, that was the difference in understanding. I believe that we would be working on building a budget, and that was not Brian's understanding of the budget committee. So it was really a conversation about how the budget is done, rather than actually building that budget. There, Michelle and I had a conversation with Brian on how we'd like to proceed for next year, and how that needs to be a conversation amongst the board on how we intend for the budget committee to operate next year, and potentially starting sooner in the year.
Well, we definitely need to write it down, because every year, that's what we get. So obviously, there's a, okay, Wayne, just need to make sure it's written down so that the instruction is clear, that the committee has participation in actually the numbers for the budget, and where the money is or isn't, and their say-so. I mean, how do we, I mean, what about the curriculum that we need to do, and the capital improvement projects, and all these things that are on our lists?
I agree.
So will we see the budget before it's in the paper this time, or will it be like last time, or how is that going to work, Mr. Wallace?
The official documents, the, the timing is of something, just as far from nuts and bolts, I, I'm not sure how much, I mean, I'm not, I'm working on the budget now. I have about another week, and then I have to advertise it before the budget hearing. I just got official numbers three weeks ago from the state, so when I really start putting everything together, there's, I mean, I, at that point, I mean, we certainly could have a, if you want a budget committee, and you want them to have, to say, these are the priorities of what you want to cover, I mean, many districts do that, there's different models, this is a budget advisory committee. You know, often, one thing that I tried to get feedback was, you know, from administration and also the board, saying that just the decision that we're going to maintain status quo, that's a big budget decision. If we're going to just maintain program and sort of roll budget over, then that right there, that decision right there has been 95% of your budget, honestly, as spending on negotiation. We're in negotiation here with additional maybe two and a half, three million dollars of compensation. Is the budget committee involved in that? I don't know. I mean, so, I mean, those are where the big dollars are.
Right.
And certainly, if you wanted the budget committee to say, well, there's a million dollars available for capital projects, and have them involved in which one's higher, which one's lower, you know, then I guess that's, we have a void, they want that process to move forward. The actual doing the budget, if I have a million, that doesn't look too much different as far as the budget document, I budgeted a million. Now, how that million is spent actually in that year, obviously, would be part of those kind of conversations that Trustee Jones was talking about. But the actual budget of, when I actually get revenues, it's, the, the timing is driven by the legislative session, and when they get those information with the State Department after they see what the legislation has done.
Right.
The, the actual budget document and doing that, there's not a whole lot of time.
Well, and I would, I would confirm at least what Brian has suggested there in terms of establishing priorities. One of the, one of the things that I would see if we have a budget committee, seeing them doing, is taking a look at programs across the district. Some of the programs are federally funded, and they're pretty locked in, and you're not going to do much with those. Maybe do a little bit with plant facilities, which we don't have anymore after the end of this year, but at any rate, in terms of the general fund, about 87% of the budget is in personnel costs, I think.
Oh, the general fund, yes.
Yeah, in the general fund. And so, you know, you could look at personnel and say, well, do we really need this position or that position or something else?
Do we need all these things? Do we need to be paying for all these sports when we have all these other needs?
Right.
And that was the thing, right.
And that's the, that's the establishing of priorities.
Right.
And same kind of thing will probably go on if and when we look at supplemental levy again, because we're going to have to decide what priorities are so important that we have to go to the taxpayers and say, we really need your support to do this.
Right.
And we've looked at it long and hard, and we don't think we need to do this any longer, or whatever, however you want to approach it. But that's what I would kind of see the budget committee doing in, in support of the budget building process. The numbers just kind of almost dictate themselves in some sense, based on what your priorities are.
Right, sure, yeah. And that was, that was a, sort of the same conversation we've been having since I've sat on the board, and I was assuming that would be carried out this year, that we finally got a committee, but we'll write it down, so that there won't be any discrepancy of that thing. Hopefully, next year, what happens after that, I don't know, but, okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Wallace, for the input. So we're going to be seeing the budget here pretty soon, then?
The budget hearing is mid, in the June meeting. The advertisement has to be out around Memorial Day, it has to be two weeks prior, so.
Or we have a workshop prior to that? We haven't, in previous years, hasn't been a practice, it's something we could...
Well, something we asked for, and it was bypassed, so I would have to put that in there, yes, we've asked for, we would like, because when it's printed in the paper, it says the board, here's the board's approved budget, but the board hasn't seen the budget. We haven't approved it yet. So I would like to see the budget before it's printed.
Well, and again, in terms of building the budget, it might be, might be helpful, to the understanding the board members have, if we take a look at some of those issues like personnel, you know, the other thing that begins to dictate is, you know, how much increase is there going to be in salary, not only for certificate-ed staff, but for classified staff as well, the number of positions you have in the various support categories, all, all that kind of stuff. That gets built into the budget, and as Brian said, if you just kind of roll from one year to the next, that means all the positions that we currently have in place will roll into next year, plus whatever the increased cost of salaries and benefits might be, and that kind of brings up the number at some points, yeah. But in terms of understanding, you know, that might be helpful, that kind of workshop.
So would you like to have a budget workshop?
I hate to have another meeting. I'm not suggesting that, but.
Well, so are you anticipating the budget hearing being the June 15th board meeting?
Correct.
Okay. And now, tonight, I heard you say it had to be two weeks before the hearing, I thought it was three.
For advertising.
For advertising.
I, you know, the dates have to be just before the budget hearing, you have to do it two consecutive weeks, so, you know, I'm shooting for, the press only does, doesn't even do legals on Mondays now, so I have to, you know, I'm trying to have my deadline, at least where I have the numbers, so I can prepare the actual notification for the form by the State Department by this Friday, so I can get it to the Cordillane Press and figure out the date to publish.
The one kicker that I can think of that we're dealing with now, which is a big deal, is all that ESER money and how that's going to get spent. And I don't know that we've really had much discussion about that, maybe, maybe you know better than I do.
Right, I mean, the ESER $2 will be mostly spent at the end of this year, so we have ESER 3, so my initial plans were, it lasts for two years, was to budget half for this year, half for the next. The next curriculum adoption, which I think the numbers of the previous meeting were, you know, 1.2, 1.3 million dollars, so I would put, you know, dollars of, you know, since we have the ESER funds, it could be, you know, learning loss or those one-time costs, if that was the plan to allocate the, or budget, some of the ESER funds for things like that. Also, some of those HBAC projects are there, that'll be reflected in the budget. So a lot of things that will be reflected in the budget will be some of the things that the board has discussed.
Okay. Without interfering with your productivity on the budget, is it, is it done yet? It's not, correct?
No.
Okay. And I hear you saying that to get it, the 30th of May is Memorial Day, the 31st is Tuesday, so it sounded kind of like you were thinking of sending it to the press on the 31st?
No, I, I want to have the budget done next Friday on the 20th, so then I can start preparing that document that I need to do and get it to the press prior to that, prior to Memorial Day.
Okay. Would we be, we already have something on the 25th, don't we?
26th?
No, the 25th of May.
I don't, I don't mark down. The 26th of May is the ISBA leadership?
Right, but the 25th of May is a Wednesday.
District safety task force.
Okay. I didn't, we just, thank you, get a rest for me here.
Sorry.
That's okay, we did two workshops.
June, June.
Not May.
June, June.
No, June 22nd and June 27th. Uh, June 22nd was the long range, and June 27th.
Okay, but we want the workshop before the budget hearing, which is June 15th.
Right, right.
And if Brian has to publish two weeks in advance of that, we're in the end of May to have the workshop for this.
Right, I was clarifying, you're getting, we schedule on the 25th.
Okay. Saying no, we have something on the 22nd of June, yeah.
Okay, no, I'm looking in May, so it was the 22nd of June, okay, I think we're somehow on the same page, which is May 25th?
Yeah.
You people may have a little, for the budget, yes. Okay, I was getting my months confused with what we had just booked, but is the boardroom available on May 25th, a Wednesday?
Not before 5:00 p.m.
That's fine, this would start at 5:30.
Then yes.
Perfect. Can we have a budget workshop on May 25th?
Right, and what, I guess, what information do you want? I mean, do you want just the budget documents like I've done in the past?
Well, we've had budget workshops, that's usually what you've presented, is just your budget documents. I know Trustee Jones had said a workshop would be great, so maybe we should wait for him to get back in here to see what else he might want.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, yeah, I mean, do you want sort of the budget hearing presentation I've given past, that type of thing, or, I mean, I, right, that's why I'm asking.
No, because when we, like I said, you said we haven't done workshops, we have, we've done two of them, and it's been your presentation of your documents, that you go through your documents and explain what they are. That's been the workshops that I've sat through for two years. We didn't do one last year. But what would you like to have at a budget workshop that we're going to have on May 25th?
Oh, you did it.
I did it.
Well, I, I think part of what we would need is, is laying out some of what you just described, for example, with the ESER money, but, you know, where's the money going to come from for curriculum adoption of part of the budget? What's the overall increase as a result of whatever negotiated agreement turns out to be, and, you know, where those funds are going to come from? Because that affects all, you know, about all the budgets.
Correct, and sometimes I have to make some assumptions because we haven't settled, so I have to build a budget based on where...
Well, hopefully by the 25th, we will have.
Well, I, I'm, I have to stay, I can't wait until, until we settle, you know, Trustee. So, I mean, so some, yeah, and I certainly can say that, you know, went in that anticipating increase of salaries and benefits to this, I mean.
And I don't know what the workshop has been like in the past, maybe we, a lot of what you've done in those workshops is satisfactory.
Well, in the, the last two that I've sat, we didn't have one last year, we had one the year before, the year before that, but, or maybe it's only the, I don't know, I've sat through them. They were Brian's presentation of his documents explaining the numbers on the document, not necessarily where money was going to, but just, you know, these were the numbers, and this is how it got to them. So there wasn't an explanation as far as, these are the capital improvements that we're going to be doing from this money. There wasn't an explanation because we didn't buy any curriculum, but it, you know, here's your curriculum dollars, they're going to come out of here. You know, any major improvements that were going to be had, it wasn't discussed within the budget that this is going to be taken care of through here. None of that was discussed, but it was just more of a presentation on, here's the budget and here's the numbers.
Well, and some of that is somewhat self-explanatory, in other words, if you have a line item for salaries and...
Right, that's your salaries.
You have a particular budget, I mean, not salaries, so if you have a line item for for benefits, then well, that's, you know, benefits, four or three things, right?
Right, so I've presented like last year, I, I presented just some sort of trends on budget on projected enrollments and things like that, and then, um, the, and then, yeah, and then sort of had some comparisons, and then I had a, just a quick shot by fund, I meant some of the small funds I may not have done, federal force, we didn't even know if we're going to get it, you know, some love, but, but the major funds, I would have a anticipated start balance, and then I had salary, benefit, purchase services, material supplies, and capital, and then I projected end balance by fund. And, and then, you know, so that was definitely, you know, that type of information presented, and then, but then I get into the details of, let's say, the specifics, as Chair Thompson said, okay, you had a million dollars in the plant facility fund, what are you planning to do with that? We didn't get into that much detail. That, we, right, and on some of those projects, obviously for last year and the plan, when we budgeted the dollars that were going to come in with COVID and some of the stuff and being shut down, we budgeted, but honestly, to know exactly what we're going to be able to do last year was, it was sort of a challenging challenge.
Sure, sure.
But, you know, but definitely the things that we knew, that we had a, like last year, we were doing the Lakeland Middle School rough, we did some, the Garterwood rough, so also, of, so there's $600,000 in the plant fund. Um, we did some, uh, the Garterwood rough, so also, um, of, so there's $600,000 in the plant fund that, you know, we had the, the capital expansion from time to time, that, those were part of that number.
Part of what I, I envision is, by doing it the way we're suggesting, is that we get an understanding of what's inside the budget before we get into a public hearing situation, and we ask people in the audience who maybe don't understand, so they begin to ask some questions. We don't want to be in a position of asking those questions, I think, at that juncture. I think we want to be able to ask those questions in a different format. And go ahead and let you do the presentation when it comes time for the budget hearing, and if there's some public input, that's fine, but we know in advance what's inside the budget, I think that's our.
So, as I describe, you know, that sort of what, at least as far as what you're seeing, and then when you get to sort of fund, if there's a big, like, line item of capital, then if you want to have more details, then you can stop me and we discuss it about that.
Yeah. And, you know, I don't know, we've taken a deep dive look into support services, for example, in the general funding. You know, everything that's involved there, because you've got a lot of personnel spread around across the district doing a variety of things, and they're all probably important, but where do they fit in the prioritization of things, I guess, is a question.
Right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Depending on that note, are you good with the budget workshop on May 25th?
I'll be there. Bells are on.
Yep.
Better be wearing bells, you know, I have to say, that is a Wednesday.
Or, yeah, May 25th, 5:30. All right, trustee representation at graduations. Last year, the trustees were divvied up at the schools, and the year before, they were divvied up because of COVID. Dr. Meyer says it has, it had been that way, I recall that all the trustees were present at the schools when they graduated. So we need to decide if we still want to divvy us up amongst the schools, or if we feel we can be a united front and be at each high school's graduation and celebrate the seniors graduating.
And I forgot my dates.
They're in June.
Friday, June, Thursday, Mountain Views. Tuesday, June 7th is Timberlake High School. Wednesday, June 8th is Lakeland High School, and those are both in real life, and Mountain Views is in Mountain View.
Mountain Views is at Mountain View?
Yep, in the gym.
Yeah, and I've, I've attended that one in the past, it's kind of fun.
So I just need to know who wants to go, which ones are, if you all go, that's great, I just need to tell the principals, so they can do the programs.
I would like to be at all of them.
Yeah, I can be all of them also.
Dave, are you going to hold out?
Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, I'm holding out, I'll go.
Okay. Your, uh, the trustees will all be at all the graduations.
Okay, all five trustees will be all five?
Yes.
Oh, perfect, okay.
I'll put just four chairs up there.
I will.
No, I will, I, um, this is our own, I will be at both, at all three as well, so that'll be seven chairs.
And I would appreciate it if Lakeland, we were not segregated like we were last year.
Segregated from them?
The girls sat on one side, the boys sat on the other.
Maybe you did that yourselves.
I didn't set the chairs up, all I know is I was looking around going, why are the women over here and the men are over there? It just means no set, and they were divided, I mean, like there was a big space.
What's the, uh, what's the procedure for handing out the diplomas or covers or whatever you do?
They, they, they do a little, they do them different in all three, but they will, um, tell you ahead of time.
Okay.
Uh, what they want, and, um, they rotate at Timberlake High School.
That's what we used to do, is we had each trustee and a certain number of.
At Lakeland High School, they'll shake all of our hands, that's why it's segregated, the administration's on that side, and then we were on this side, and then we shake hands. But the, the board chair at all three has to go up and certify.
Yeah, you have a special duty.
Yeah.
I do. Very proud of that duty. It's pretty awesome. So, yeah.
Well, thank you, they'll be happy.
Graduations are fun.
They are. That was the best part last year, getting the handcatered. One last year, that was pretty cool. Okay, the trustee's own maps are under discussion because, um, we don't have the new maps. Uh, we had to pay an extra sum of monies to get them from the company that we thought we paid to help us through this project to get to the final end, but we're not getting the maps unless we pay more money. So, um, I had Rosanna check with, uh, Minute Press, which is, it's less than and the maps are bigger. So, um, just want to know what you guys want to do with respect to getting the maps, because we need.
We're just talking about printing them up, right?
Yeah, getting them printed. Um, because the zones have changed significantly, uh, 1, 2, and 3 have, and, no, 3, 4, and 5 have.
Yeah.
I knew I was in there, but, um, so since they have changed significantly, we do need to get them printed up so that people can come in and see what zone they're in. Do y'all have any input one way or the other?
Get her down.
Okay.
Who is, um, this Mr. Carson who said he's, I, I didn't quite understand, this goes along with Minute Press or, or Minute Press, or? No, it's something else.
He is the gentleman from ISBA.
Oh.
That works on drafting the maps.
Oh, I thought he was saying he would do it just.
He, he's printed the maps for ISBA. And so he was offered to do them for us, but, uh, I did want to point out that his quote is for one 34 by 44 wall map. And then smaller individual trustee zone maps. Uh, the quote I got from Minute Press, because I got Minute Press's quote before I got his exact description of what he was providing, is different. So Minute Press is going to give us, I had her do a quote for two different sizes. One is that E size, which is the 34 by 44, and then they also, last time they did a map for the district was a 36 by 34. So Minute Press will do two large maps, but, um, assuming you'll need two.
Right.
Um, so I can go back to them and get quotes for the 11 by 17 maps, but.
Of each individual zone?
Yes.
Yeah, because I think that's important.
Mm-hmm.
So, the two, what was it, 262 from Gray? Because we don't have the attachments. We just have a copy of the email, that's okay.
I will tell you right now.
So we would be getting five little maps and one big map from the ISBA dude.
240.
240.
Is the cost, yeah.
Okay, so, and Minute Man's one, whatever, 169 for just the two maps. Reach out to them, see if they can do the five little ones.
And only one big one.
And one big one, and what that cost would be. And then, would we be fine to have her just?
I would, yeah, I would, I would favor keeping our vision short.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Bar, concur.
We do.
Okay. Do you have more to add? All right, um, just an update on teacher appreciation week, I know we, did you bring that card?
Oh, I thought I.
Did you?
How's you?
Nice, we've got more, okay, we've got some cards. Um, Bob, it went well, Rosanna, you too?
Roseanne, Roseanne and her elves.
Sure, that was great, that was awesome. And if we can start maybe contemplating doing something like that, I, I personally think we should do something like that at the start of school. Um, I know I do it personally, but it would be great if it was throughout the whole district. Um, because I gave a lot of cupcakes to my schools last year, it was hot, but I felt it was needed. So I think we should decide what we'd like to do and sort of make it an annual event that we recognize and appreciate at the start of the school for the teachers and everyone. And I'm saying that now because I will forget, and then it will be, you know, right before school starts, and I'll be like, oh my gosh, we got to do this, so. So should we have Rosanna start looking into this, or contemplate some ideas of what we might consider?
Do, do you have an whole staff meeting at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, that first Tuesday. And I do, I, well, in the future, we'll have to delegate it to Rosanna, Rebecca did all the, like, the public would thank Rebecca, she went till 8 o'clock at night, she had to go to several different stores to get all the stuff, so she was out late the night before, um, getting all, everything for the baskets.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
So, just for heads up, I mean, Rosanna's brand new, so she didn't even know where everything is yet, you know, in the community, but, um, I think the welcome back thing is on Tuesday, is where it's typically been, but the new superintendent may change it, that was just where it was when I got here, so I assume it's always on the Tuesday.
Well, the other reason I asked that question, that's maybe inappropriate, Tom, I would just around that to offer a welcome back for all staff, as opposed to this particular thing, it was a teacher appreciation week.
Right, right.
And, but I think, you know, we, we certainly appreciate any staff that has a job at the table.
Right, absolutely.
Something at that time might be appropriate, because we start that meeting.
That's a good idea, too.
Okay. Okay. So you should put that on your quote list.
Okay.
Or else. Because I don't want to make, I want to make sure this doesn't, the ball gets. And you're doing like, I'm doing, hundreds of cards before school starts. Okay. Agenda attachments with links for general access, what is J9? Agenda attachments with links for general access.
Oh, that was, uh, Roma's or trustee Kristen's recommendation to have a discussion regarding.
Oh, yes, 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 because some of the attachments, when they're on the agenda, if you're, um, not logged into Board Book or you're not on, you know, part of the network, then the, the user clicks the link and then it says, oh, you can't, the public can't access the link.
Oh, okay.
Because it's not given public access, so we need to make sure that that doesn't happen somehow. It was mainly the curriculum spreadsheet things.
Oh, okay.
So if the public clicks on the agenda item, that it's linked in, and it, if the spreadsheet or the document, whatever it may be, isn't full access to the public, then they have to request access.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they couldn't get, because it happened to me, I was in a hurry looking for something, I was actually on my phone, and I clicked it, and it's like, oh, you have to request access, that's like, how's that? By the way, when I got home and.
Oh, right, right, right.
Got on a machine, and then there was someone else that had brought that up, but anyway, so that was it. We need to just make sure whatever links are in the agenda that they, and they're attached to some basically electronic documentation, anybody can open them.
Right, and honestly, everything, the public should have access to everything with the exception of, uh, I believe it is resignation letters?
They should have access to those.
Correct.
No HR items.
Right, well, the HR memo though, they can have access to, which shows who was hired and who's resigning. But, isn't that correct? Okay, but just not the resignation letters. Right, okay. So, um. That is.
So it's a kind of a website?
No, it's a board book, um.
No, it's Google.
Oh, it's a Google?
Yeah, so what happens is anytime somebody shares an electronic document through Google, and they don't.
And they're, okay.
And they, that document gets put in Board Book, if the document isn't shared with everybody, regardless of whether they're in the same domain or not, then people.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I'm trying to figure out technically, when the, when the agenda is built and there are, you have these link items on there, they need to be linked not only in our Board Book, but in the agenda that's on the, uh, after public.
Right, and they are.
With the exceptions.
Right, but I think part of the solution to that is that we don't have a Google document link, we have a PDF.
Well, that would be true, except that thinking in curriculum, I understand why it's done that way, so you can click over to, which the PDF can still have its own links.
Okay, okay.
You know, but I know why it's done, for curriculum anyways, I, there's been other things, but it's just easy to maneuver through there.
Okay, because, yeah, we have had board meetings where we're like, we can't, we don't have access. And then change, settings have to be changed, and then we have to refresh, and so it's, it is an inconvenience, and then later on down the road, if it's a parent trying to access, they don't have access.
Yeah, right, no, I, I understand that, because I looked at that other part of the website and found the same thing.
Okay. So with respect to that, um, how, what do you, how do you want us to move forward on it?
Go to.
Fix it, yeah, I like it, just fix it, yeah, people, just fix it.
Yeah, we just have to make sure with, if the document's attached, you know, maybe we just ask them, you know, is this public access?
Yeah.
Does everybody have access?
Okay.
So basically, anybody with the link gets to see it.
Yeah. Okay, next is the Go Good flyer. The, uh, Running Shoes for Kids, I think that's what it's called, anyway. She came to me, I know her, uh, not through the school, but through a, a different avenue, and she said that she would like this to go out to the schools. Um, she told me that she was told it had to come before the board, I was told tonight that that's not accurate. However, I'm disclosing that I do know this person, um, she puts on a phenomenal outreach to these kids. Everybody gets free shoes, I mean, free tennis shoes, i- it's pretty awesome what she does. Um, but her whole thing is, is she wants the kids involved in the running program, um, just show up and run type of a thing. They're offering it as a fundraiser, kids can enter teams or something like that and, and, um, earn money for their whatever organization. She's also doing a, a Go Good for Fund program, but her biggest thing is, is she'd like the flyer put out in all the schools, so.
Is this, uh, an individual who sponsors this or an organization?
An organization, it's, uh, Running, uh, Running Shoes for Kids is a 501(c)(3) corporation, or nonprofit organization. And, uh, so, uh.
Does this, um, set any kind of precedent?
We get a lot of flyers in all the time that the board policy says the superintendent approves them, so if the board takes over, it's just, I think it's going to create a long delay for folks that come, and there is a board policy on this.
So normally, it would just be through the superintendent?
Yeah.
Let's just accept it as information, then.
Okay. Okay, then I'll pass it off to you to either approve it or deny it.
Yeah, okay. And we've done this one in the past several times, so I'm not sure that that information is shared. But I will make sure that our friend, the person knows.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
And it is, it is in July, so.
Okay.
It is. Out there. Okay, um, do we have anything that we need to take action on from discussion, I don't think we do? More member input for future agenda items?
Yes. Okay, um, I would like to discuss the, the continuation of the base program.
Okay.
I would like information on, I mean, I know that it's supposed to be a self-sustaining thing, but how much administrative time are we putting into hiring and keeping and retaining staff for those? I hate the thought that families were put in the position that they were this year.
Yeah.
If that's what we're going to have to run into with keeping staff, keeping it staff, I would rather not have the program than have to shut it down halfway through the school year. So I'd like to get some more information and numbers on, on that program. And I know this is a sore subject, because a lot of, um, we had some. People have said that we were spending our time on policies and dress code, but I would like to revisit that issue or that policy.
Okay.
The dress code policy, before we get too far into getting to next school year.
Okay.
It's on our list.
Okay, good, thank you. I just, I want to make sure that it is addressed, because last time people thought that we didn't address it or it wasn't done soon enough so that people were aware, so that they could buy appropriate school clothing, so I would like to.
One of the policies that we will bring in June is policy 1303, and it's an annual list of policies that were required by statute to review, and one of the things that the board chair Thompson and trustee Grissom added, that dress code's one of them, there's a few other ones that we just said, these are just good best practice, like there's no, we don't have to, but because of parents and awareness and transparency, we want to, so dress code was one of them, and there's a few others, so our hope is that it's going to be one that we look at and then we bring it at board meeting and review it or send it, whatever we decide to do with it, but that's one of them, so if there's others, I can add that to the list as well.
Okay.
Didn't, didn't we revamp that with parent input? The dress code?
I haven't, I wasn't a part of policy when you guys did it, so it hasn't been my time view.
Because we revisited it after, remember we got feedback, maybe we had Dr. Meyer do it at that point.
I think you did it at the, and it's been a while.
Yeah.
We did have, I think we had to have some clarification through, I mean, we revised it in the sense of clarifying something.
Okay.
But I don't think it was anything, I say, I don't mean it disurgeingly, but it wasn't anything significant.
Okay.
It was something though, that there was a contradiction, I think, and we need to clarify or clear up that contradiction within the policy.
I think at the start of the school year, you asked Dr. Meyer to bring it to the admin and have it be something that was sent out and just so the parents were aware that there was an additional sky regarding it, I think that happened in September or October, but we haven't looked at the actual policy since I've been helping, so.
Right.
Okay.
But it is on our agenda to bring it back up, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? That's all I have. Bob, anything? Dave?
No.
Trustee Grissom?
I do have.
All right, great, with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061A, B and 1D.
So, second.
Hearing a motion in a second, let's have a roll call vote.
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Baines?
Yes.
Trustee Grissom?
Yes.
And Chair Thompson.
Yes, please. We are in executive session. Okay. Oh, thank you. Forgot to plug in the speakers. Oh, yeah. No, the speaker over there. Oh, it's just, yeah, I just unplugged it down in the office. Kind of your finger. That's what I keep you, keep you around, like you're right here. Nothing like you being plugged up at the table. It's okay, I plugged it in the table during, right in the middle of the meeting, because I was like, my battery was dying, and yeah, I was like, no battery, no battery. All right, so we've come out of the executive session, and I will entertain any motions at this time.
I will move to deny the opening of an appeal based on advice of cancel.
Second. Hearing a motion in a second, all three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Me opposed?
Stand.
Four ayes, one I stand. Motion passes. Are there any motions at this time?
Emily, we have heard the lead of absence request.
One second.
Or 5992, oh no, that's the D48.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, all three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Me opposed? Hearing then the motion carries. I think that's it. All right, meeting adjourned. It's 10:10.